Mic check. For this time for Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty one, we'll take a silent moment of personal reflection. As a reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare a conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest as per section one thirty-three of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. I will be declaring on item seven point three point one.
Counselor Marin.
So I will declare a pecuniary interest for seven point four point one for the Saskatchewan Lottery's Community Grant Program.
None, none others noted at this time, then we will move on to item number two. Is there any additions or deletions to this agenda that we should be now aware of? None being noted. I will look for direction on council and the approval of the agenda that's presented. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that the agenda dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty one be approved.
Seconder, Counselor Torson, thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, approval of the previous meeting minutes that are attached. Oh, sorry, apologies. We did not vote. Thank you very much, city clerk. Any discussion on those, about the agenda? Getting ahead of myself here. Not seeing any? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, city clerk, keeping me in check on that. Moving on to item number four, the approval of the previous meeting minutes. I'll look for direction. Counselor Torson.
I move that the regular council minutes dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty one be approved.
Thank you. Look for a second, Counselor Marin. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on those minutes? Not seeing any? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number five. Is there any business arising from those minutes the council needs to deal with at this time? Not seeing any noted. Item number six is a public hearing scheduled for the two o'clock hour, which we'll return to at that time. Moving on to item number seven, new business in seven point one, city manager.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. The item before you is the Lloydminster Agricultural Exhibition Association Conditional Land Sales Agreement Amendment. The recommendation before you is that we approve the amended conditional land sales agreement number three for the sale of fifty-one point zero eight acres to the Lloyd Agricultural Exhibition, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to seal, sign and seal all necessary documents. The issue before you is that we've been working towards a conditional land sales agreement and we do have one in place with a couple of conditions with, with that. And one of the conditions was the financing part, and that has been taken care of with the Lloydex receiving funding from the provincial government. Having reviewed the document, when we go back to close, close the document or close the, the sale, a couple of things came up when we negotiated the, the agreement. There's a environmental remediation that's required, and the, one of the conditions on there was that they have that remediated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And so when we negotiated that agreement, it was two, three years ago. Times have passed, a couple of years have passed. And so the Lloydex has also has asked to extend that to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, with repayment of that starting in January one of twenty twenty-six. So there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar item. We were splitting that cost up to three hundred thousand dollars, and then they would repay the city in equal installments over a, over a ten-year period. And so we just, we're just delaying that. So that's one of the conditions as well. The city had also reviewed it and looked at one clause in there that gives us the first right of refusal, which we had it, had it in our, in our interest at that point. But we've actually asked it to include at the price that we paid today. So before it was our market value. And so, and we've also, within that, we've, within the option of purchases, it would stay registered until December thirty-first, twenty thirty-five. And so that date has two meanings. We, we wanted twenty forty, they wanted twenty thirty, we met halfway in the middle. The second part of that is it lines up with the remediation portion of that. So we thought that was a reasonable date to pick for both sides. And it also meant that the, if all goes well, the payment should be done for the remediation, and the remediation work should be complete at that time. And so as well, this option to purchase gives us the ability to place the, place the option on title. That's correct, city clerk. He's, he's got the technical end of it from the legal side. I'll let him talk about that.
That's correct. So the right of first refusal in Saskatchewan, you require an agreement called an option to, option to purchase. So this allows us to register that option to purchase on title until twenty thirty-five.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. So to be clear, if some scenario exists where the Exhibition Association is purchased or something along those lines, and there'd be like, what we'll say, a change of ownership of the exhibition itself, we would still have the option at that time if we chose to, or would we not?
So if, if the Exhibition Association changed and it was a scenario that was like for like, and it was an exhibition association, we would have that option or not to exercise that option to purchase. That would be entirely our right up to twenty thirty-five, January, December thirty-first, twenty thirty-five.
Counselor Marin, oh, sorry.
Sorry. And, and then so if, if the, if the unforeseeable happened and they became insoluble, then we would still be able to exercise that right option. And that would be registered for creditors of that as it's registered on titles.
I believe in the agreement, there's a, I think it's thirty or sixty days for us to make a decision on when we would do exercise that first right. I think it's thirty days.
So to be clear, if this was pledged against some level of debt at some point in the future, we would still have an option ahead of the lenders?
That's correct. That's how our, our lawyers have explained it to us as well as, once again, up to twenty thirty-five.
Counselor Marin.
Thank you, your worship. So that was the question I had is if we would be ahead of creditors. But more of a comment then is I think the sale of this land's really beneficial for the city and, and the Lloyd Agricultural Association. So I'm pleased to see the city, you know, working with the Lloydex to collaborate on this deal and to making sure that there's that extended timeline that's really reflects our current economic environment that was unfortunately imposed by the pandemic. So I think that it just makes a lot of sense for us to allow that extended timeline and for the Lloydex to be able to, to have that opportunity to pay over time and, and do that work over time. So the Lloydex is really an important longstanding organization in our community, and it will be an important part of our economic recovery post-pandemic. So I think that this was a, a good deal for, for everyone involved.
Thank you, counsel. Any other comments or questions of administration? To go along with Counselor Marin's comments, I think this, the previous council started, started working with the ex three years ago, as the city manager indicated. And it's gone through a series of processes. And as you can see, this is revision number three. Basically, we ran out of time, I believe, for the first two, just due to the issues around when the financing finally was obtained by the exhibition to, to, to move this forward in this form of a grant. And certainly it is appreciated that we can see the exhibition have the potential to grow when the opportunity arises. And I think that's, as we come through the pandemic and on the backside of it, that will be opportunities that will exist in our community to certainly benefit from having the exhibition there for the long term. It's been in our community for just over a hundred years, I believe. So it's going to be hopefully here for another hundred years to continue to add value to both the residents of the city as well as the greater community that surrounds our city, the, the area that it serves, the deep, rich history it has with agriculture, be it cattle and grain in this area. And continues to do that as they continue to plan for agricultural shows within the pandemic's rules and all the requirements that they're doing. So it's good to see that they're continuing to try and provide to the agricultural community as best that they can, even though we can't gather enough numbers as we usually have. Any other comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction from council on seven point one point one, the Lloydminster Agricultural Exhibition Association Conditional Land Sales Agreement Amendment. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that council approve the amended conditional land sales agreement three for the sale of the fifty-one point zero eight acres. Part LSD three, four, five, section eleven, range twenty-eight, west of the third meridian, to the Lloydminster Agricultural Exhibition Association Limited, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you very much. Counselor Whiting, seconder, thank you very much. I'll ask again if there's any further questions or comments on the motion before us. Not seeing any? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, city manager. Moving on to item seven point one point two.
Thank you, worship. The subject matter is the AMSC Natural Gas Program. And the recommendation before you is that council instruct administration to participate in the AMSC Aggregated Public Procurement to extend the current contract for the supply of natural gas to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The issue is the city Lloydminster has a contract with AMSC for the supply of natural gas, which ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. AMSC is a wholly owned subsidiary of the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, or better known as AUMA, and is, and is offering aggregated procurements for natural gas supply to the end of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This aggregation opportunity will achieve budget stability while locking in pricing during the currently low-priced environment. To ensure AUMA members can take advantage of this opportunity while mitigating the risk of an uncertain future markets, AMSC will be offering aggregated procurements for natural gas up till the end of twenty-sixth. Today, we're paying about, we're paying two dollars and thirty cents per gigajoule, and it estimates at this point to be in that same range. We do have the ability to sign on for one, two, three, four, or five years. At this point, administration would recommend the five years from a pricing standpoint, but also a budget stability standpoint. Gives us five years of, of, of good, good pricing for that period of time. And given the markets and the way it's gone, it looks, it looks favorable at this point anyway, and a good time to go. So we've done the same on the electricity side. I was just trying to thank, I think we're to the end of twenty twenty-four on the electricity side. And so this would match or I guess extend the gas side too. So I'm open to questions if you have any.
Thank you, city manager. Counselor Don't check.
Thanks, worship. Do we have any idea how much money we've saved on, on a year on average? I was looking at that and trying to do a calculation on it, and I see the individual numbers, but I just.
From what we pay today compared to what we might pay, is there won't be much savings. It's right in the same ballpark as what we're paying today. So we don't see it, just the, if the market does go up, we would, we would see that. So I don't see, based on what they're telling us anyway, the, the estimated is around two dollars and thirty cents a gigajoule, and that's what we're paying today. So I don't see, it wouldn't be a, it just gives us stability and obviously if the market does go up, that's when we would see the savings.
Have we seen anything in the past then? I mean.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I guess, yeah, back in, I want to say two contracts ago with AMSC, I believe that contract was in the five to six dollar a gigajoule range. And so this is significantly better. I wasn't here at that time. I was in Vermillion at that point. And I remember that contract soaked us all and brought us to the first contract was really good. The second contract was not so good. And it skyrocketed, and then it's come back down ever since. So, which I guess would lead me to the five-year, signing up for the five years and having that stability would be a good thing for the city.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just, you know, I, I can totally understand from a budgeting standpoint of having a, we would have a reasonably good idea from usage outside of the fact that you can have some winters where bitterly cold, but you can't necessarily predict when that's going to be. But having at least some fixed price on the, on the per gigajoule, I think would be a useful tool as far as budgeting. And when we're trying to keep everything as flat as we can from a municipal standpoint, I think that this is a, a good tool to use because riding the market, you could, you could definitely see how high it can get if you ended up having to go down that route. The only thing is like as far as natural gas itself, like I haven't looked into, nor would I necessarily be able to understand what the market is intended to do over the next few years as to whether this is the right path or not. But even just knowing that it's, you know, not that long ago that the prices were more than double this, it seems like a pretty straightforward, safe bet to go in this direction. So I would support it on that basis just because it's not that distant of a memory where the price per gig, gigajoule was significantly higher. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, counselor. Counselor Whiting.
How, how often have we used this system for securing our natural gas? Has this been, how many contracts does it go back or how many times have we?
This is contract number three, I believe, for the city. So that's, we use that procurement method, and it's all municipalities. So we're not all, but a good chunk of the municipalities in Alberta are using this, using this program. So now each contract's been a little different. Some have been two years, some have been three. And I guess it depends on how long your municipality has signed on. You've had options before to sign up for one year, two years, three years. And in this case, they're giving us up to five years. So which also tells me that the rate's good because they're trying to lock it in for a longer period of time, which they, they haven't in the past. So.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, worship. Just one quick follow-up. How much of a premium are we paying on locking it in for a longer time? Is it significant, or is there no premium that you're paying for a five-year contract versus another one?
My understanding, there's no premium on it. It's just you're paying that, that period for, that rate for that period of time.
Interesting. Okay. I, I thought it might be like an interest rate where, you know, interest rate for a five-year term versus a three-year term, you'll see variability in the rates because of that, because you're, you know, taking on a certain amount of risk. But in this case, there's no change, which is, I guess, good when you consider that five years is a nice window to be able to budget from. So, thank you.
Certainly. Now, Counselor Marin.
Thank you, your worship. So I think this is a good agreement. And, you know, as we look to long-term strategic planning as well as stability in our budget, it makes all kinds of sense. And I did check with someone in oil and gas, and they thought the rate was really good and, and not likely to go lower. So take that for what it's worth. But just as a new council member, I was curious, are there any other options that exist, or is this, is this the only option that we explored?
You can sign up as a individual customer with another, we just, we just choose to, I guess, leverage our, the number of municipalities and the, and the amount of gas and electricity that all the municipalities use. And I think it leverages a better price for, for all of us. And so I think that's the premise behind it. Doesn't stop you from going out and negotiating your own with direct energy or with another provider.
Right. Okay. I just, I, I wasn't sure if the city had another option, but this seems like a really good one. So I would support it.
I think to help add to that, city manager is AMSC is owned by AUMA, which we are a member of. So certainly they've returned in the past dividends, if I can call it that, to the city. And depending on what services we use from AMSC can lead to a, a, a direct benefit. And how do you apply it? Did it come from gas? Did it come from the power agreement? Did it come from insurance and all sorts of things? There's multiple pieces that they provide, they offer, and the city administration has worked very closely with them, trying to find the best that works for the city. In this case, electrical and power, electrical and gas have been two areas that certainly have fit the city, whereas others may not, yes, due to the size and nature of our operations.
Thank you, your worship, for those additional comments. Thank you.
As well as the administrative work of tendering and doing all that, and providing the expertise that we don't necessarily have to do that, this type of procurement. So it's, it's good on that side too, that we're trusting in them. And it's worked in the past. They've done a good job on our behalf, and, and it's worked well.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll look for direction from council on the AMSC Natural Gas Program. Counselor Marin.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that council instruct administration to participate in the AMSC Aggregated Public Procurement to extend the current contract for the supply of natural gas to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Fagnant, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to seven point one point three, city manager.
Thank you, worship, for seven point one point three, fund request, automated photo enforcement revenue policy. I'll ask Carolyn from Economic Development to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Today I come to forward to ask for a fund request to the automated photo enforcement revenue. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today I come to forward to ask for um, a fund request to the automated photo enforcement revenue policy. The background, the automated photo enforcement revenue policy currently states that fifty percent of all net revenue be targeted to safety initiatives within the community. Safety initiatives include such items as traffic safety improvements, parks and recreation, and educational safety initiatives, using the funds from the Public Safety Photo Radar Capital Reserve for improvements at the Martin Brown location aligned with the policy requirements. So a little, little background, the community, Co-op Community Spaces Grant Program opened February first. This program aims to improve community health and wellbeing by building places for residents to come together while creating outdoor spaces for everyone to enjoy. This would improve the health and safety of the residents of Lloydminster while moving initiatives through the Martin Brown area structure plan forward. The Co-op Community Spaces Grant funds up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the grant does not require matching dollars. However, the dollars requested would be seed money to demonstrate commitment and support for the application. Today, we recommend that council approve the request to withdraw eighty thousand dollars from the Public Safety Photo Radar Capital Reserve Account Number one, two zero zero, two two zero, three seven, one one four, to apply for the Co-op Community Spaces Grant Program for the redevelopment of the Martin Brown area. The improvements would include restoring and retaining the current school playground equipment, installing pedestrian crosswalk and temporary curb extensions, both which are outlined in Phase One of the area structure plan for Martin Brown that was completed in twenty twenty, and three, develop a picnic area within, within, develop a picnic community area within the area, also outlined within the plan. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Kala. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Um, first of all, I I just want to say thank you for bringing this item forward. Um, it's it's difficult when we do things like area structure plans, because you often get the comment from the public and and even potentially for administration that gets frustrated over time, that you never really do anything with the plan once you make it, so having uh, an opportunity to actually move one of these plans forward and do something with it, and something that could be to the benefit of that neighborhood, uh, and even deal with some of the feedback, I think, that happened during our public consultation uh, in regards to the area structure plan in general, I think is a great idea. Doing it with uh, someone else's dollars, if we could get some, is awesome as well. Um, the only question I had was really just as far as the eighty thousand that we're pulling out of reserve, so obviously this is something that's come up since kind of the budget approved, uh, so then we'd be moving it from reserve, but was there something that is specific to public safety, which I understand there's a public safety element to some of this, uh, but was there something specific to public safety that we were otherwise saving for with that uh, photo radar money that we're foregoing to another time? Or was there nothing necessarily pinpointed that we were going to spend it on specifically?
Look to administration, I'm not sure who, city clerk, I guess he looks like he could call this.
Currently, right now, through the Saskatchewan Photo Radar Enforcement Program, we've been funding which are crosswalks and flashing crosswalks um, with those funds, um, so these funds have been uh, um, un- untargeted with the exception, I believe we're using some for trail system, Bud Millers, is that correct? Uh, I look to the Denise for the uh.
There's um, expected balance for December thirty-first of three hundred and sixty thousand in that reserve. We haven't budgeted for any money to come out of it in twenty twenty-one at this point. We had earmarked it as something we could do if we needed to accommodate some reduction in in taxation, if we needed to. Um, other than that, there was some money used, uh, assigned for it for, I believe, some visibility to support a visibility grant that uh, our Glenn Alfred was putting forward as part of the S G I grant. I think it was coming from that. Yep.
So, to be clear, we're not necessarily foregoing anything outside of having some wiggle room within the budget as we get assessments and stuff like that, and go to the point where we approve the L rate, which, given what we're looking at, I think is is a very fair trade-off if we can have some improvement in that area. Thank you.
Counselor Bucky, yeah.
Thank you, worship. So I just wanted to be clear on the seed money, uh, piece, so we get full grant funding to cover off the cost of this, that money gets put back into reserves, or how are we, how are we dealing with that piece of it?
So the seed money is is called seed because it's not necessarily matching. This isn't a matching grant, we don't need to match what we request, however, in order to be considered um, serious and and have some, you know, skin in the game, that seed money is that eighty thousand dollars.
Right, so if we don't get the grant, are we moving forward with the project?
No, not in twenty twenty-one, so that would be moved to the twenty twenty-two budget, so the intent of this dollar is to move forward with the within twenty twenty-one for the grant, if if the grant is not received, then we would put the money back and we would be pursuing it as a twenty twenty-two project potentially.
No, that's good, that's what I was looking for, thanks.
And one piece to mention about that grant specific that I didn't mention in here, sorry, was that the Saskatchewan Summer Games did receive this grant, however, the city of Lloydminster has not in past.
Counselor Marin.
Thank you, your worship. So I did a little drive around um, Martin Brown School site this weekend, just to remind myself of the opportunity that we have to invest in this neighborhood and and develop that space, so I really like the proposed approach that you're taking to create safety through the installation of the pedestrian crosswalk and to restore the playground and create a picnic area for people to connect. Using funds from the Public Safety Photo Radar Reserve, I think everybody could support, and and I certainly do, to enhance this neighborhood and create a safe place for those residents to really connect and and uh, and make good use of of that space. I I was curious, in the grant application, do you need to be specific about the details of the development? Um, I just would want to encourage attention to developing an accessible and inclusive space so that peoples of all abilities in that neighborhood were, would be able to enjoy it.
I think that's super important to include in our application, and that would be the intent, is to make sure that it is.
Thank you.
Following up Counselor Marin's question, just the wording of the uh, recommendation, uh, I have a little concern to restore and retain current school playground equipment. If that equipment was to be out of date, are we locking ourselves in saying that we may have to remove some of it and replace it with more modern, because depending on when the last time the equipment was modernized, I just don't want to see administration locked in saying, oh, and we've told people we're not changing, is what I, and using those words exactly, we're not changing anything, we're just refreshing, but if it's out of date or it's unsafe, do we limit ourselves with that? And that's the question I'd just ask administration about that item.
I I do believe that the school playground in which we're speaking at was assessed during the Martin Brown Area Structure Plan. So when we say retain and restore, it means restore and retain what we can and build on on that.
Sounds good, and that's, that's what I, I would take it as, but I just wanted to be sure to hear that. Uh, the second item, again, we go back to the area structure plan, um, can you be a little more specific? Are we adding another pedestrian crossing, or are we enhancing the pedestrian crossing that exists, uh, basically getting to the outdoor pool? Is that the intention there?
I believe that it would be adding, um, is it, I believe it's adding and adding the curb extensions to slow traffic?
My understanding, it's it's enhancing what's already there. That was a concern, I think, during the public engagement, was the traffic going from the residential across the street to the, to the pool, as well at the parking lot and for the rack as well.
Okay. And I guess the the third one in that, um, this one's always a debatable one, I hear about it, uh, certainly, where we have the the curb extensions, would there be a possibility to add, potential to add solar LED flashing lights as an option instead of the curb bumpouts? For the safety, I know that uh, we have, we have existing lights that flash continuously, but the newest ones that we've got, solar-powered ones where they're activated by the person walking, seems to definitely, I can see them two blocks away. Just wondering if that would be a more viable option, flashing lights uh, that were activated, solar system, I likely a little bit more money than the curb extensions, but I think that would, from a satisfaction, hopefully, of the pedestrians as well as the drivers more than anything. The curb bumpouts do slow traffic down, but uh, boy, they're, they can be a bit of a nasty for our road folks and uh, some of the opera, people on the road at the best of times, so. Just uh, again, just a suggestion, as much as anything, I don't know if we have that flexibility with the area structure.
I think through the area structure plan, we do have some flexibility, again, that would depend on funding levels as well, because curb extensions are um,
A little cheaper.
A little cheaper than the flashing lights.
Fair enough. I'd just like to make sure that we're looking at those options from that perspective, because again, I'm sure over time, as uh, we've had curb bumpouts, now we've got those flashing lights, I'd like to see uh, sometime down the road from administration, what's, what's more favorable to operations, because our road teams have to work around the bumpouts. Uh, what is uh, policing and our technical services say about uh, the flashing lights? Do we have more respect, the drivers actually respected? At the end of the day, it still comes down to the drivers paying attention to the road.
Absolutely, and through this project, all of those departments will be consulted, um, including parks and rack and transportation.
Terrific. Any other questions, counsel?
Yeah, thank you. Um, is there a specific uh, spot predetermined? I know the area structure plan has been been created, but uh, I know in in council here, we've talked a couple times of maybe that structure plan looking a little bit different, or possibly slightly changing with with future opportunities. Is the, is a player, in order to get the funding for this, does the playground area need to be firmly dictated where it's going? Or is it, or is it going over by the outdoor pool area, or was this in the Martin Brown School area?
So the the playground specified in this was the school's playground, so the one closer to the school site, yeah, absolutely.
I think that was my only kind of questioning or concern, is yeah, it's good for the area, and I have no question about that, and if we can get some money for this, that's awesome. I was just concerned that it may um, you know, as we look for opportunities in that area, uh, and what that looks like down the road, if this may hinder that perhaps, just a thought that I wanted to pass along.
So, sorry, the question was whether or not the funds could be used on another playground, not within Martin Brown, or?
Well, just in the confines of that Martin Brown School area, is it, you guys have an idea of where it's going specifically already and where it's keyed in to be?
So I think within the grant, um, there'll be flexibility, absolutely. Uh, the one that we're speaking specifically through the area structure plan is that school one that does exist already within, within this, within the site, and improving that one, um, because of safety issues.
Okay.
Counselor Fagnan.
Thank you, worship. Uh, just curious, of course, with receiving the the other grant for the Summer Games, uh, it sounds like you did have that discussion with somebody in regards to, it wasn't the city of Lloydminster, so our chances are
Yes, absolutely, we had that discussion to make sure that it wasn't um, something that we had previously applied for, and even if it was, it wasn't it wasn't really an issue, it was just something that we wanted to be aware of.
Yep.
Um, so yes, it was done through Saskatchewan Summer Games.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll look for direction from council on seven point one point three, the funding, a fund request for the automated photo enforcement revenue policy. Counselor Dachek.
Move that council approve the request to withdraw eighty thousand dollars from the Public Safety Photo Radar Capital Reserve Account Number one dash two zero zero dash two two zero, dash three seven one one four, to apply for the Co-op Community Spaces Grant Program for the redevelopment of the Martin Brown area improvement, including restore and retain current school playground equipment, install pedestrian crosswalk and temporary curb extensions, and develop a picnic area within the area.
Thank you, counselor, look for a second. Counselor White, thank you very much. Any further discussion or question on the motion at hand? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Katelyn. We have now reached, uh, just after the two o'clock hour, so we will return to item number six on the agenda. Item number six is the public hearing for bylaw number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, the amendment to the land use bylaw, residential uses. At this time, I would like to note before we begin that during the public hearing, we ask that you respect the views of everyone here and allow each person their time to speak without interruption. Each person wishing to speak has up to five minutes to make a presentation to council. If you do wish to speak, please state your name for the record, and whether you are in support of or opposed to the proposed bylaw. When you are finished speaking, please remain at the front, as council may wish to ask you questions. All discussions of city council members, city staff, delegation shall be directed to the chairperson. Any question brought forward by the public, which are not able to be addressed during this meeting, will be done so at the next council meeting. Council will not debate this matter during this hearing, and the decision regarding whether or not to grant this as the bylaw, further readings will be dealt with following the public hearing. I declare the public hearing for bylaw number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, land use bylaw amendment, residential uses, open at two oh five P M. I would ask the city clerk to confirm whether or not this public hearing has been advertised in accordance with the applicable legislation, and to summarize the purpose of this hearing.
I confirm that this public hearing has been advertised, and notice has been provided in accordance with the applicable legislation. This public hearing was advertised in the Meridian Source on January twenty-eighth, February fourth, and February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And the purpose of this public hearing is for bylaw number three, twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw respecting residential uses.
Thank you, city clerk. I will now call upon anyone wishing to speak who is opposed to the proposed bylaw. I will now call on anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed bylaw.
Your worship, we have a, a letter from a Mr. Ben Harrison of Lloydminster Saskatchewan, um, and his letter reads, Dear Mayor and Council, I'm writing to you in support of the draft bylaw number three dash twenty twenty-one, to amend the text of the land use bylaw five dash twenty sixteen. It is my view that adding a greater number of housing types to most residential land use districts in the city will provide greater flexibility for landowners in how they develop their property, allow for more gentle incremental redevelopment of neighborhoods, support small-scale developers, and help address any local concerns about missing middle housing, which is an issue affecting communities across North America. I encourage the city to continue to pursue policies that encourage all types of housing to be constructed based on the market demand. Variety in housing types benefits neighborhoods and benefits the entire community. Sincerely, Ben Harrison.
Thank you, city clerk. I will call again one more time, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed bylaw? I now will call on anyone else who is affected by the proposed bylaw that wishes to speak. I would like to thank all presenters for their comments, and now declare the public hearing for bylaw number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, closed at two oh eight P M. We'll be returning back to agenda item number seven point two, and I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, worship, for seven point two point one, self-contained breathing apparatus vendor award. I'll ask Fire Chief Lee Swick to come forward and present.
Morning, Mayor and Council, or afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, chief.
So today we're bringing forward a request for decision on the replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus. Uh, the recommendation, um, that, uh, our recommendation is that council award the contract for the replacement of the fire service's self-contained breathing apparatus to Rocky Mountain Phoenix, of Red Deer, Alberta, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, excluding GST, be allocated from the twenty twenty-one capital budget project number two one two three zero zero four, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. Uh, in twenty twenty, Fire Service conducted a review of its respiratory protection program and found that there was a requirement to establish an evergreening process to ensure that breathing protection evolves with best practices and industry standards. In order to meet current industry standards, additional safety features were required, which included personal safety systems, facepiece enhancements, communication enhancements, and increased cylinder capacities. Additionally, the Fire Service collective bargaining agreement required all firefighters to have individual facepieces that are fit-tested and meet O H N S guidelines. During the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, administration provided an update on the S C B A request for proposal process. The city issued a bid document to acquire purchase information for twenty-eight, uh, twenty eighteen NFPA compliant harnesses, eighty sixty-minute carbon fiber air bottles, and fifty-five facepieces. and fifty five face pieces on October fourteenth, twenty twenty. The request for proposal package was issued and posted on the city's bid and tenders website. The initial evaluation criteria and associated weighting identified within the R F P is summarized in the following table. Financial sixty percent, technical evaluation thirty percent, service training warranty five percent, and value adds five percent. Two self, two complete self-contained breathing apparatus were supplied by each product manufacturer, Draggers, Scott, and M S A, independent from the vendors for the evaluation process. Evaluation process was conducted by eight members of the Fire Service, which was comprised of two management, two full-time, and four part-time members. S C B As were evaluated on their overall profile, dawning and doffing, and air breathing capabilities, on-air and pre-entry test capabilities, peak-low performance, harness security, harness freedom, balance and reaching, face piece communication, search and rescue, rehab, redawning, ease of cleaning, and overall general impression. The proposal closed on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Eight bids were received and evaluated. The vendors, the proposals, amounts excluding G S T and total scores are summarized in the following table. A total of three individual evaluations of all submissions were completed. Administration is recommending that Rocky Mountain Phoenix be awarded the project due to having the highest overall score. Through the R F P submission and evaluation process, Rocky Mountain Phoenix displayed a high level of experience and expertise in the S C B A procurement process, outlining their timeline for delivery and training of their product to the Fire Service. Options are that council award the contract for the replacement of the Fire Service self-contained breathing apparatus to Rocky Mountain Phoenix of Red Deer, Alberta, in the amount of two hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars excluding G S T, to be allocated from the twenty twenty one capital budget project number two one two three zero zero four, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. Counsel does not approve the award to Rocky Mountain Phoenix and that council direct administration to gather more information. I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments? Start with Counsel Whitey, and then I'll get to Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just gonna ask, does this include then the, you mentioned education part of it, the training, that sort of stuff? Does that come, is that included in this price?
Yes, that's included in the price.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks, Chief. So we're not going with the lowest bid on this particular one, and it's marginal on a purchase this size. Interesting that the the score difference is a lot bigger than the thousand dollar difference. Is there something you can point out that Rocky was doing better than associated to change that technical score?
So I think, yeah, I think some of that comes around to the communication capabilities between the two different products. The M S A product communications was very clear for the comparable product. The R F P as well for the training, delivery timelines, and things like that really stood out in the R F P.
The the switch from twenty two sixteens, what's the current status of our twenty two sixteen compressor cylinders that we have now? Are they up for hydro? Are they expiring? Are they? What are we doing with those when we switch out the whole system? Because feasibly, we have fifty, sixty of those bottles sitting around fire halls in town.
Yeah, that's a process that we'll be looking at trying to figure out what the best process is to do with those. The bottles that we have are steel and aluminum, so as long as they meet their hydrostatic testing, they're still current. So whether they go up for tender to be sold or or down that road, we're not really sure yet. That's something that we're still looking into.
Yeah, of course, all that stuff is, it's still got some value, even though it may not be the current standard. So making sure we get our value of what we're replacing is important to me anyways, to make sure it's there. Lastly, switching to the other other bottle, what are the hydro requirements of that? Are there, are costs to hydro and maintain those other new bottles higher than the current cost?
No, they should be the same. They're a carbon fiber bottle. They're done every five years. Life expectancy of these bottles are fifteen years for carbon fiber. The life expectancy of these S C B As that we've set is for fifteen years, which is the end of the warranty process.
And then finally, as we go down this twelve years from now, or ten years from now, are we going to look at slowly replacing things as they go along? Are we gonna say fifteen years from now, we're gonna, we gotta know, we gotta budget for another huge purchase?
I would probably say that it would be a wholesale change out again in fifteen years, but we should be, you know, hopefully setting aside funds over the next fifteen years for that replacement when that time comes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I just had a question, and I think you almost answered it in a way when you were talking about wholesale changes in fifteen years. But just as far as making sure we got the right number of it relative to the, you know, the complement that we have of the part-time and the full-time that we have right now. So are there gonna be any, like, a significant number of these that won't be able to be used that could, I don't know, go out of date? There's no expiration date on these, obviously.
As long as they meet their flow testing and hydrostatic testing of the bottles and everything is still current.
Okay, I I just wanna, not that I think that we're overpurchasing, I just don't wanna buy something if, you know, there's the standards change so often that we would be out of date within X amount of time likely, and then we buy way too, way more than what we need. But what you're suggesting is no issue there.
So currently, right now, we're actually replacing the same number of harnesses that we have in service already, and we're actually reducing the number of bottles that we have in service at this time because we're going to a larger capacity cylinder.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds good to me. Like, as far as a lot of these things go, I wasn't sure what Counselor Buckingham was talking about most of the time. So I'm I'm glad that he does to a certain extent on our end. And I I know that you guys in the service know your stuff. But yeah, so so long as the lifespan of the ones that we're getting for the significantly, you know, different prices, you're still happy with it and happy with the product and everything, and you think it's gonna be the best, most safe tool for our people, then, you know, it's it's one of those costs of doing businesses if you're going to provide a fire service. So it makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
Counsel Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I was really impressed with the engagement that you had with the Fire Service members to actually help make this decision and and to score them. So so well done there. It notes that they did an outline for timeline for delivery and training. And so will that happen within twenty twenty one, or which quarter would it, would you anticipate that would happen within?
For the delivery of these?
For delivery and the training.
Yeah, so the delivery and training should all be completed by March thirty first is what we have in our R F P. Delivery date is four to six weeks from the date that the order goes in. That's not barring any issues from COVID or anything like that might come up.
Great, thank you.
Chief, just a couple more questions from my perspective. Compressors that we have at the fire halls, I believe we have two. Are they both capable today to meet the forty five hundred P S I model? Because we're going from twenty two sixteen or thereabouts to forty five hundred.
So yes, the one compressor that we have is at Station Two, and that's the only compressor that we're gonna be using. It is capable of filling forty five hundred P S I and twenty two sixteen at this time.
Excellent. You talked about warranty, so can you explain the fifteen year warranty? That's an awful good warranty compared to a lot of other things that we drive off the lot.
So, yeah, all manufacturers, it seems, have a fifteen year, basically a bumper-to-bumper warranty now. So anything that is defective on the apparatus itself is usually replaced unless it's like user is abused that piece of product, then then that's something that we would be responsible for. But everything usually is, it's bumper-to-bumper for fifteen years now.
Okay, terrific. Rocky Mountain Phoenix, I believe, is located in Red Deer. Do we have a local choice for warranty because a service, if the regulator goes out or if face mask parts are required, is there a local vendor?
Yeah, we do have local vendors in in the city that can provide service for this product.
Yeah, and that would just be the, they'd be able to provide that warranty service.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. I think that, so just out of curiosity, did we choose, did you say M S A is what the preferred recommendation is then?
Yes, it is.
And M S A has got a long, well, they all have a long track record. But I think M S A was some of the first coming out of the name of the firms, so.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. I think just to clarify Counselor Torson's question a little bit, when we're buying these things, they are flow tested every year. They have to be to keep standard up. So as far as their serviceability and stuff, they're they're high, this is a, this is a life safety tool. So they'll be used and taken care of very properly that way. And the tanks have to be hydrated every five years. They go along with that to keep up with the safety and everything else. So they're, they do last, and they are well maintained.
Any other questions? With that, I'll look for direction from council on seven point two point one, the self-contained breathing apparatus S C B A vendor award. Counsel Fagin.
Thank you, Portia. I move that council award the contract for the replacement of the Fire Service's self-contained breathing apparatus to Rocky Mountain Phoenix of Red Deer, Alberta, in the amount of two hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars excluding G S T, to be allocated from the twenty twenty one capital budget project two one two three zero zero four, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Buckingham, seconded. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Questions? Not seeing any. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to agenda item number seven point two point two. City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for seven point two point two, Lloydminster S P C A agreement. I will ask Glenn Alfred to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council.
Good afternoon, Glenn.
I'm appearing before you today to make a recommendation that council authorized the city to enter into a three-year agreement with the Lloydminster S P C A at a cost of seventy five thousand dollars for twenty twenty one and a two percent increase annually for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Additionally, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. As council is aware, the S P C A used to come annually with a grant request. With that program suspended, I'm appearing to ask for a three-year agreement for the Lloydminster S P C A to allow for predictable and dependable funding source for the organization. They do provide an important service to the community through veterinary care, microchipping, adopt a pet, animal care, school education, and an organized foster care program. The S P C A is making great strides. The city has developed a solid partnership with them. And they house just about one thousand animals, stray animals and homeless animals per year. I will speak briefly on the pound keeper agreement later as well. We are a significant user of that service. But I just wanted to point out the the services that they provide. Their new executive director has great plans for the S P C A, and I think it's a very worthy cause that's being put before council today. The, it should also be noted, too, while there are some other municipalities that use their services, they don't have agreements yet, just the county of Vermillion River does. There are a number of people that bring animals in as well from the rural areas without going to their municipality for service. The next nearest services of this kind are available in Meadow Lake and Bonneville, so quite some distance from from Lloydminster.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Questions or comments? Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. First off, I think it's just we're stating that this is in line with what council's direction has been as far as the the core services that the city has funded over the years, whether it be the big jewer, the library, or anything like that. Thanks also for mentioning the fact that this is not the only revenue that the S P C A gets from the city. We also pay them for pound services at what I believe is a is a very good deal for what we get as opposed to having to try and figure that out some other ways. So just in the in the vein of transparency, the the city does fund the S P C A more than this particular agreement, but for services over and above it as well.
Yes, I'm I'm really pleased that you brought that up. It'll give me an opportunity to speak to that. The seventy five thousand dollars being requested in this grant form, it is accountable. They share their financials with us and where they're headed. Again, in partnership with the city, there is, this this forms approximately fifteen, fifteen to sixteen percent of their expenditures for the year. We also have an agreement that we've had for the past five years, and we're negotiating that right now, is fifty thousand dollars per year for pound services. And that is the ability for our officers when animals come into their care and the owner can't be immediately located to actually go and lodge the animal there. And from that point, the animal is taken care of. It's it's basically done for the city. We bring the animal there, and it's no longer our concern. We don't have to continue to try and find the owner. They do that. They take care of it. If it needs any veterinary care, any behavior analysis or anything along those lines, the S P C A takes that function on entirely for that fifty thousand dollars. So in in total, right now, we're funding them at a hundred and twenty five thousand, although part of it is for service.
Yeah, if you look at, look at comparables around anywhere, the S P C A provides a great service, and we've got it at a very good rate.
Yes. In my previous municipality, we spent more than this. And our our cost analysis showed that we were paying upwards of five hundred dollars per animal whenever we took one in. So it's, 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 it works for the city and it works for the S P C A.
Yeah, this is, this is, you know, this is part and parcel to long-range planning, sustainable funding, good stewardship, and and good community service. So I got my support all the way around. Thank you.
Counsel Whitey.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just, I guess, to jog my memory, we as a municipality, through the M G A or one of the acts and then through to our charter, are mandated to have a pound, the ability to have a pound or the functionality of a pound for instances of strays and that sort of stuff? Is that, is that correct?
I believe so.
So the the charter would make us responsible for those stray animals and to, once we take in a stray animal, then we're obviously responsible for its care and feeding and ensuring that it's either returned to its owner or.
And which is, and we get some good bang for our buck through the S P C A, there's no question. And the services that they offer there are very, very good. I was just trying to figure out, I I was pretty sure that we as a municipality were mandated to have that sort of pound services. Do do our, do the neighbors, like the rural municipalities, are they mandated to have pound services in their municipality? Because I know, I know they do come and bring, a lot of people may not know, or they just automatically bring strays or animals to to our, to our S P C A and thus our our pound. Is that, are they mandated through acts as well to have pounds?
Yeah, the the M G A and I believe the city's act would make it requirement for them to have a bylaw. Once you have a bylaw regarding strays, then you're responsible for their control of those strays. And and I think we're, just so we're on the same page here, the seventy five thousand that we're providing today is a is a grant for their operations. The fifty thousand that the city has an agreement with them is a service agreement for the the care and the placement of animals that we we pick up. So there's, there's two pieces here. The seventy five thousand dollars would go to their general operations or how they operate. Fifty thousand is remuneration for the services they provide to the city.
Okay, yep.
Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, just in general, I think it's a great plan and a great thing to continue to do. And to have the three-year agreement, I think, will be a big benefit to the S P C A in terms of their annual budgeting and being able to make a plan that is longer than the one-year plan that they would always be stuck with in the past. One question I did have, though, within the terms of of what they're providing and everything in this grant that we're providing as well as the pound care, I know in the past, there's been efforts on the preventative side, and I understand that the city is not exactly flush with cash right now. But within the agreement or or is it just separate proposals that the S P C A may bring something to the city at some point in the future to say, hey, we've got this new preventative plan, you know, to help take care of the issues related to animal care or to help, you know, lower the cost overall for some of these things? I I know that the preventative plans have happened in the past, have been proposed to us in some years. I think we actually did fund some of those specific programs, but we haven't seen them in a few years. I could be wrong because I just don't remember specifically which ones they were. But is there still opportunity for that within our agreement? For other services? I can't remember what they were. Anyone remember? Am I making things up?
They were doing, what do you want to call it? An assisted spay and neuter type program to reduce the number of of those. to reduce the number of of those types of things that they had presented to council at one point and they were looking for funding to try and offset the costs of that program to make it affordable for people who may not be able to do that, so you're talking about things like that.
They are currently doing that within the funding they receive, they do have some service agreements with veterinary clinics that are doing the spay and neutering for them. They try and make sure that every pet that is adopted out is already spayed or neutered and so that to to prevent the overpopulation. This also ties back into our initiative within the new bylaw where we make it easier for people to make sure that their pet gets back to them and it's not actually taken and required to be fed and housed at the SPCA through the tagging program. So those those are things that are coming, the new executive director there has some ideas and and I think we're gonna hear more from the SPCA and the community is gonna hear more from the SPCA in the months to come with respect to that. I know I will be coming back with the pound agreement.
Thank you worship, yeah, I just want to add add to overall my comments or I just give the Lloydminster SPCA a lot of credit for how much retooling they did over the last two years to make this all work. I know that that couldn't have been easy, I know the city did force their hand to a certain extent, but I think at the end of the day they are much more efficient and and running a well-oiled machine now and and you know, being able to reward them somewhat with a a longer-term agreement and and having having, you know, simpler operations going forward with some of the changes we're making, I think you know, are a benefit to that organization and definitely the city benefits from it, so happy to be able to approve this one today.
Glenn, one of the items that you've mentioned in the background and I know they've been doing it, I just want to confirm they will be continuing is the microchipping for identification because with the collars wonderful thing, but we know that animals seem to somehow slip out of their collar. And that microchipping will continue on so that they can just ensure if an animal does return with no no collar for whatever reason, they can check the microchip and say, oh, that belongs to so-and-so.
Yes, definitely the a good question, the all the services that I've listed there, I checked with the executive director and spoke to Danica about these things and these are the programs that they can they want to continue to operate. So this this document was made in consultation with the director of the SPCA.
Terrific, excellent, that's good to hear because I think the collar program is a great idea, going away from licenses, but I do know that dogs and cats seem to have their their Houdinis on four legs and they're very good at it sometimes. Any other questions? Not seeing any, I will look to council for direction on seven point two point two, the Lloydminster SPCA agreement. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you worship, I move that council authorize the city to enter into a three-year agreement with the Lloydminster SPCA, Lloydminster and District Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-one and a two percent increase annually for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Additionally, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you, seconded. Counsel Torson, thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item before we call the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you very much Glenn.
Thank you very much for your time, your worship.
Counsel Torson's gonna step out. Moving on to the agenda of seven point three, the chief financial officer, look, the city manager.
Thank you worship, for seven point three point one, city Lloydminster Business Needs and Current Enterprise Resource Planning Assessment, I will ask CFO Denise McDonald to present.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon CFO.
The issue in front of you is that administration determined the need to engage a third-party consultant to take a holistic approach to assess the ability of the current enterprise resource planning or ERP system. In two thousand and sixteen, the city issued a request or proposal for an enhanced technology project. The financial system upgrade was awarded to Diamond Municipal Solutions, which in turn was ended up being purchased a number of times and is now being owned by Central Square. It is a central nervous system of our all our financial systems, including Questica for budgeting, Pearl for payroll, intelligence for recreation software, CompuWeight for our landfill, FirePro for the fire services, Alpha Arrow Solutions, as well as many others. In line with lean thinking and its methodology of continuous improvement, engaging a third-party consultant would provide the city with an unbiased, comprehensive assessment of the current state of the city's overall ERP system, technical needs assessment, a change management as well as resource assessment, recommendations and a roadmap to a future state. Administration received two proposals and an evaluation is currently in progress. Consultants will be working with the cities and staff management and current ERP system provider to examine the people, processes, practices, data and technology to find opportunities for improvements and sustainability. The estimated timeline for this project will commence from February to May of two thousand and twenty-one. The options available to council is to approve the consulting engagement fees from the reserve account or to request further information. The budget implications are that the consulting engagement fees were not allocated in the two thousand and twenty-one budget for this project and require council approval. We are asking for seventy-four thousand excluding GST that can be funded from the general government operating reserve account one dash one hundred dash one three zero dash thirty-four one one zero. With that, I'll put forward a recommendation that council approve the consulting engagement fees for city of Lloydminster Business Needs and Current Enterprise Resource Planning Assessment in the amount of seventy-four thousand excluding GST to be funded from the general government operating reserve account one dash one hundred dash one thirty dash thirty-four one one zero.
Thank you very much CFO. Questions, comments, counsel touch.
Thank you worship, pardon me, so I I guess as I'm looking at this, this is really an overall big picture down to fine detail in terms of how it all fits together. What's the driver in all of this, I guess, aside from, you know, wanting to do that? Seeing how all the pieces fit together, what's the primary goal of of doing this, there must be one piece of the system somehow that's driving it.
Certainly, we're we've been looking for a number of improvements from the system in the last two years. We started with the finance team and this past year we were working on the payroll team. We we still have frustrations with the staff that the system isn't up to our needs and we had worked with the service provider to see if there's something that they could evaluate the health of the system to determine how to move forward. And when we received that statement of work, then we decided that maybe it was actually Marie Pretty had suggested that maybe we go with a third party to evaluate the system and have a non-biased approach to it because the vendor will they might see some improvements, but of course they're biased coming to the table, so by having a third party and looking at it holistically, we might have a much better approach to how to improve things for the future.
Thank you, makes good sense.
Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you worship, thanks CFO, so our end result in this, what are we looking for? Is this, you know, are we gonna end up having to change our entire operating system again? Is that a possibility when this is all said and done?
It it could very well be a possibility, I'm I'm not sure what they're gonna bring to the table. It's it's we're hoping to initially get some quick wins and get some staff satisfaction. I certainly, in my personal opinion, is there's some things in it that work very well and some things that don't work very well and we need to ensure that it works better. So if if in the end they come and say, well, this piece needs to be replaced or they could come back and say the whole thing needs to be replaced, however, I can anticipate that it wouldn't be something we would start right away, there would be in the next phases would be laid out in the roadmap that they would propose to us. It would take another, like it would be proposed for the two thousand and twenty-two year.
Yeah, unless I'm misinformed, it it seems like this is year five of this particular project. When we got on council, I believe it was already decided which direction we were gonna go and we tried to implement this new software purchase, so we're now cleaning close to year five and we're still not happy. So it's it's frustrating that we have to now hire a consultant and go out and do this again. And it's frustrating for me, I can't imagine how frustrating it is for you guys and all of your staff if you're having that much trouble with it, but hopefully this can get us on the right track finally because it's it's been too long.
I would agree.
Counsel. Counsel Marion.
I'm sensing some frustration, thank you worship. So I, on a very small scale, I just was looking at all of the software that I have personally and realized that, holy cow, I'm spending a lot of money on stuff that I need to really take a look at this and see what I need. And so for for you guys, I think the risk would be if we don't have this that we could potentially be spending money that we don't need to spend or and and still not having the service that we need. So the risk could be a a whole lot more money in the long run if we don't have the consultant and help to create that roadmap for for your future state. And and thank you, Counsel Buckingham, because I didn't realize this was a five-year kind of program, so I can understand the frustration that you're experiencing. I I think it's it's really wise, a good investment of of money, we've already seen some really good work come out of the lean project and and from your department. So I I think that this will be money well spent to help us develop that roadmap and and plan for future. I'd hate to see us be like the federal government and can't make payroll because their system didn't work. So I I think being proactive is is really important for us, so thank you for your work.
Thank you, council. Any other comments? One I have CFO is you're asking for an amount of seventy-four thousand dollars so you could come in under budget to that amount, that's that's really what it'd be like, no different if we went back to the budgetary process, that's what you're setting as your peak. Like you could come in at some number below that seventy-four thousand.
Sure, we're we're looking for that approval because we we want to be under that threshold.
All right, any any further discussion? I consent and I've had numerous discussions with the CFO about that system because as Counsel Buckingham said, we were here and saw administration get it underway, but it's as we found out imperfect like everything else and hopefully we can get it closer to perfect, I don't know if we'll reach that that pinnacle, but certainly getting the most out of the system that we've invested in. Beneficial, I think, to the city, so I can certainly support this as well. With that, I will look for direction if there's no further comments. Counsel Donahue Chuck.
Move that council approve the consulting engagement fees for the city Lloydminster Business Needs and Current Enterprise Resource Planning Assessment in amount of seventy-four thousand excluding GST to be funded from the general government operating reserve account number one dash one zero zero dash one three zero dash three four one one zero.
Thank you, council, second, Counsel Whitey. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much CFO. Counsel Marion, if you would be so kind to send Counsel Torson back in. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven point four, the Community Development Services, city manager.
Thank you worship for seven point four point one, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two Saskatoon Lotteries Community Grant Program, I will ask Patrick Lancaster to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship and council.
Good afternoon, Patrick.
So before I begin, I'd like to point out I made a slight error in the issue, so the issue that we are bringing forward is that the Community Services Advisory Committee has reviewed grant applications for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two grant cycle, so this would be grants that run from April first of two thousand and twenty-one completing March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, so I had a slight typo when I put that together for you. So this, for those not familiar, the Saskatchewan Lotteries Community Grant Program is funding that we receive through Saskatchewan Lotteries Trust to support programs involving recreation, sport or culture in our community. These projects are intended to be run by organizations, volunteer organizations, nonprofits and charitable organizations. And and we put out an annual call for applications each year. The funds that we receive total eighty-one thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars, this number is based on our Saskatchewan population as calculated in the last census. We did see a bit of an increase back in around two thousand seventeen with the new sense federal census numbers that bumped up our Saskatchewan population numbers and so we saw an increase from the the Lotteries Trust for this program. For the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two cycle, we saw thirteen applications for funding. This is a decrease from what we'd received in the past and seems a bit consistent with some of the struggles that local recreation, sport and culture organizations have had in delivering services during the pandemic. In our previous year's cycle, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I'm watching my numbers real careful here. We saw several programs who are struggling to deliver services and and complete projects and we've been working with them and making slight adjustments and making sure that they stay consistent within the eligibility criteria of the grants. We did see some funds returned to us, which were then reissued through a reallocation process that took place earlier this year. For the projects that the committee is, the Community Service Advisory Committee is recommending receive funding, careful consideration was given to ensure that sufficient funds were allocated to each project to try to share the funds as much as possible through a diverse number of projects while it's still ensuring sufficient funds were provided to that they would be able to go forward and that we would represent a meaningful contribution to the project. Some projects were proposed with basically the the mindset that there is hope that restrictions will be lightened later on in the year. Particularly projects that are scheduled to take place next fall or over the winter. And then some projects specifically included COVID nineteen alternate plans, specifically Lloydfest included significant notes about alternate plans for during for COVID nineteen. You may note that in the twelve recommendations that there are a few, three separate projects that have sent amounts on them, which might seem a little bit different than our usual allocations. We had one project that had a very specific request and they were granted their full amount and the remainder was then split between two worthy projects as part of the the consensus agreement project or consensus agreement process that our committee follows. I guess at this point, I'll ask if if there are any questions.
Counsel Torson.
Thank you worship. Hopefully, we're not paying any of these in cash because some might be short-changed a little bit with two cents pennies, they don't exist. But it's, I just had a question. And and I think all of them look like, you know, great programs and I definitely trust everything that the advisory committees normally do on these things, they put a lot of effort into grading and scoring them and making sure we're we're putting them in the place where the best possible programs can get put forward for that dollar. But just as far as the state of the world, as far as Saskatchewan Lotteries go, are we getting some indication that that could be significantly lower next year with casinos and the like being closed for you know, potentially a significant portion of the year?
An excellent question, we have had some conversations with Saskatchewan Lotteries Trust. In particular, we talk a lot about our concerns about having to return funds if that were a case or if if projects were not able to run forward. And in our conversations with them, they have anecdotally told us that while some forms of lottery funding have declined, other forms of lottery revenue have actually increased over the pandemic, so at this point, there's not a concern of of future funding through Saskatchewan Lotteries that's been communicated to us through the trust.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Donahue Chuck.
Yeah, thanks worship, but so just to clarify, I don't think any of the SEGA funds, casino SEGA funds would be in this.
I I can't speak specifically to to what revenue streams they they draw upon for the trust. That that may be the case, in again, I'm talking fairly off the cuff or anecdotally. But in my conversations with the administrator, they indicated that the scratch and win style tickets has been a significant increase in their revenue and as such that our funding should remain consistent.
I was thinking that the SEGA funds I thought were distributed on a much different basis and should be separately.
Yeah, so I can answer that a little bit, counselor, out of the profits of SEGA, fifty percent is returned to the FSIN to be split between seventy-four. fifty percent is returned to the FSIN to be split between seventy-four First Nations, I believe it is, or seventy-two in Saskatchewan. Twenty-five percent is returned to the government of Saskatchewan to the general revenue fund. And twenty-five percent is held by the local community development corporation where the casino is located, except in our case, which is still in trust with the minister responsible for gaming in Saskatchewan due to the land issue this uh where the CIGA facility sits in Lloydminster. So I don't think any actual gam- uh gaming from casinos go into this fund from what I'm aware of.
So would it be safe to say once that's been taken care of that we would have some back funding coming our way for projects like this?
The understanding I have again on that is that the Community Development Corporation is made up a number of individuals, namely the First Nations that would comprise the border tribal councils it's known as today. Uh the city would have a vote in that as well, I understand. And I believe there was discussions about making it a little bit broader in the community to try and be as reflective of the community. That is certainly one mechanism that will be offered up as we now have an organization of volunteers, people that uh a broad selection in the community. I don't know if that will be the the methodology chosen, be it this committee or not. That's to be determined once um the urban reserve status is in a matter of thought. So there's still some questions that I can't answer on that one completely. Counselor Torson.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I didn't intend to muddy the waters. I may have heard that on the radio regarding Alberta casinos, to be honest with you, because it's less of the CIGA issue, but uh I I stand to be corrected, and I think Counselor Dajak's onto something there. But I either way, um the fact that we can move these funds through our community and get them to some, you know, worthy programs is is always good. And and it's great to hear that, you know, in this case, which you would have never had this opportunity in the past where they have contingency plans in case there's a pandemic ongoing where they can still do something good. Whereas last year, uh they would have not had the thought or opportunity to be able to do that when they first applied for them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
I was just willing to move the motion if you were ready for that.
I have one more comment then before you do that. No problem. Uh Patrick, you alluded to it and it it concerns me a little bit with the pandemic continuing. How will these groups understand that they do need to, they've got, they've set some objectives and deliverables? What happens if they go down a road of spending some money or all the money and then the event is canceled? Uh what what facilitates what there from that perspective? Because I don't want to see our committee and your department be put in a tough spot because all of a sudden there's no money to get back because they didn't deliver the program. And how is that being conveyed to the to the applicants? Because I think this is, this is that fine line because I don't know what going to come back from the government of Saskatchewan saying, you didn't hold it. Where's the money? So you can elaborate on that a little bit, please.
There's there is a fair bit of flexibility provided through the Saskatchewan Lottery's Trust. They are very understanding of the current situation. And they have made allowances for significant flexibility in the pandemic. Their primary concerns when they uh they issue these funds and see these funds go out is the accountability factor. So what they want to see, and there are some cases where events may just be canceled and there's an initial investment that may be lost there, is they'll want to see receipts. They'll want to see some sort of documentation to show that the funds were spent on what they are intended for and that those are brought back to them uh for consideration.
Okay, good. That's that's really so that it it's not just us that have a checklist. They've got a checklist. In essence, we're likely going to be part of the instruments that have to get those receipts from folks to go.
Saskatchewan Lottery has been an active, active partner in participation throughout this last cycle and been a great resource to us in making sure that we we spend as much of that funding in our community as we can.
Excellent. And I think that's that's the relationship. And I think it's just a part of the provincial government that we hear from regularly about uh dealing with the COVID pandemic and going through it, but still delivering the programming the community is looking for and needs. So, thank you. If I don't see any further questions, I will entertain Counselor Buckingham's motion.
Thank you, Worship. I move the council approve the following recommended grant allocations and authorize the the Community Services Advisory Committee to reallocate any unused or returned grant funds. Ten thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Interval Home Society for the LCYC Recreation and Support Program. Nine thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Roman Catholic Separate School Division number eighty-nine for youth sports explorers and free family physical activity events. Five thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Air Cadets one eighty-six Squadron, Inc. for one eighty-six air cadets. Four thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents to the Lloydminster Housing Authority for Halls Home Senior Fitness Classes. Nine thousand nine hundred to the Lloydminster and District Centennial Commemorative Association for saving and sharing the Midwest televised history. Five thousand dollars to the Libby Young Center, Inc. for the summer recreation program. Ten thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Association for Community Living for a recreational liaison. Five thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Area Drug Strategy for Lloydminster Youth Council. Five thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars forty-nine cents to the International Festival's Lloydminster Society for Lloyd Fest twenty twenty-one. Ten thousand dollars to Lloydminster Special Olympics for Special Olympics Lloydminster. Seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and two cents to the Lloydminster Social Action Coalition Society for art at the Lloyd Drop-In Center. And six thousand three hundred dollars to Christian Immigrant Support Services for Black History Month.
Thank you, Counselor. Second. Counselor Dajak, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Patrick. Moving on to item number seven point four point two, the RCMP building, second floor construction contractor award. I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, Worship, for seven point four point two RCMP floor, second floor construction contractor award. I'll ask Pete McQ to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Pete.
Okay, can you hear me now? Good afternoon. Um I'm here to uh discuss the um the fit out for the alert um on the second floor of the RCMP. Uh the recommendation is that council approve the award of the Lloydminster Protective Services Alert Fit Out to Craftex Builders, a division of Levo Construction Limited of Lloydminster, Alberta, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars plus GST and a contingency allowance of up to ten percent or sixty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus GST reallocated from the twenty twenty capital project number two zero two one zero zero one. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. And that council approve the reallocation of a hundred thousand dollars from the Protective Services Capital Reserve to project number two oh two one zero zero one. So this is um the um the fit out of um the uh second floor to um accommodate the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team, which is to be shown to Alert uh to provide space for their team. Uh the construction consists of office space, a bullpen, lunchroom, meeting rooms, uh storage and washrooms. Um and this will use about one-third of the available space on the RCMP side of the second floor of the building. The uh the design was actually, it it became a little bit challenging to to fit the space in. We initially started off on the south of the building and just for the access to the elevator in the lobby there. Um but the the, to to use the space and um economically, it was, we're finding difficulties. And then the other big challenge was uh finding where we could put the washrooms that would um allow us to be able to construct it easily. And by that, I mean there was no um provision for washrooms in the space when they did the initial build. So we're going to have to drill through, core through the floor and put a lot of infrastructure and working on the the main floor. Obviously, that's going to have some disruption to the operations of the RCMP. There's also a lot of limitations in where we could core through because of cells or evidence storage rooms. We thought we would get into the corridors, but when we actually started scratching the surface there, we found that everything else had been loaded into the corridors so as not to interfere with the operations of the RCMP. So uh in the end up, we we moved, we we rethought what we were doing and we moved the development to the north of the building, to the rear of the building. Um this has allowed us to um put the the washrooms on where the um, there's an open area where the forensic area is. And so it allows us to, it was still going to be some destruction, but we can minimize it as much as possible. Um and it also meant that we had to, for code-wise, we still have to provide access to the elevators. So there was an extra bit of corridor that we had to um add to it as well. Uh the city um uh put out requests for qualified vendors um on January the seventh and that closed on the twenty eighth. Um we um, we had thirteen bids uh that ranged from the lowest uh six hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty and the uh the highest was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. Um we do plan to um go back when this is awarded to work with the the qualifying contractor and the architects to to see if we can find any cost savings from from the costs that they're providing at the moment. And you've got any questions?
Thanks, Pete. Questions or comments? You've talked about, Pete, uh because of what was built. And I don't think anyone thought when the new fire, uh new police station was built in that building is was built that we'd be adding just a small portion in the second floor versus a full build-out. Had it been taken up by another occupant, namely the city, we wouldn't have had some of these washroom issues and things like that. So this has added a little bit of a complication, I take it, no one thought about in that big picture.
Y- yes, for sure. We also, we wanted to make sure we didn't, um you know, we still have two-thirds of the floor to develop. So we have um the the washrooms that are designed will meet the needs of the whole floor and not just the alert space because we don't want to go back and have to do this all over again.
Good to hear. I'm really glad to hear that because that's trying to be as as forth-thinking as we can be without limiting what you're doing as well, right? Yeah. Nobody like, well, I guess it's easier to remove plumbing after it's in the first time than it is to try and put it in the second. So, appreciate that, Counselor Dajak.
Thank you. So after this alert development, there, what, is there any remaining space to be developable in there? Or is this, this will maximize the second floor?
Nope, there will be still about, around about two-thirds of the space will be available. Okay. So from the, we we are only developing, I thought, coming back the way. So there's still scope for doing quite a lot up there.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Although this is probably small potatoes in the grand scheme of things, but when you mentioned that you would be developing the washrooms for a future need, will that all be fully covered within the one-third, two-thirds agreement with the the government of Alberta? Or if we're upsizing things, is that at our cost?
Um I believe this is all covered within the agreement. I mean, we worked very closely with Alert when we um worked on the design with the architects. So um from the initial briefing with the architects, it was that we would um have the infrastructure or the provide facilities for the whole floor. Uh so that's always been the discussion. So I believe it's included there in that, in that conversation.
If it was from the get-go, then that makes sense.
So, yeah, the uh the cost inclusive, the six uh, the six seventy-six is including all those things. And that that includes the alerts portion of it. As as Pete indicated, we're looking for an additional hundred thousand dollars, if council recalls. When we made an agreement to enter into this, uh the original price was calculated, what, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars? Um for the reasons Pete stated, um the costs have have gone higher and they're looking at an opportunity for us to share a little more of those costs. And because of those washrooms and those type of uh type of shared things, that's why we're approaching council at this time. Um the other portion of the agreement, of course, is um the rent of ten years for um operating costs. And then uh the three po- uh three positions, the uh the RCMP member, the analyst in the uh the admin position, which is.
So that is a tenure lease, city manager.
Yeah, in addition to that, when, in our discussions or in city clerk's discussions with them, if if there are some cost savings that we'll find, we'll proportionately uh reduce our amount from a hundred thousand as well. So if we see a hundred thousand dollar savings, uh we might, you know, proportional come off there, two ninety, and the other portion will come off R thirty-three. So we'll, we'll only be paying, we'll all be contributing the proportion amount that we're talking about here, so.
Any other questions or comments? I guess the other important thing is, just like any lease, being that the we, the the city owns the building. When the city lease is over, those improvements still stay with the building. So it's not that it's lost.
And once he's uh, once this improvement's completed, they become the property of the city. And and I'd like to point out that Alert has already proven its worth within the community um recently.
Certainly. Okay. Any other questions or comments? With that, I'll look for direction from council on seven point four point two.
Just one question before I do that. Is there a timeline associated with this? When, what's our scenario here for actually being completed this project?
Uh the intent is to be complete before uh July the thirty-first. So our our target is for June, end of June, to get the alert time to relocate into the building. They they have a current lease until the thirty-first of July.
I'll make the motion to do that.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Thank you, Worship. I move the council approve the award of the second floor RCMP building construction contractor to Craftex Builders, a division of Levo Construction Limited, Lloydminster, Alberta, in the amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars plus GST plus a contingency allowance up to ten percent for sixty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus GST to be allocated from the twenty twenty capital project number two zero two one zero zero one. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you. Secondary, Counselor Dajak. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thanks, Your Worship. I move the council approve the reallocation of one hundred thousand dollars from the Protective Services Capital Reserve to project number two zero two one zero zero one.
Thank you. Secondary, Counselor Dajak. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Pete. Good luck with construction. With that, I will look to the city manager for seven point five operations.
Thank you, Worship, for seven point five point one potable water sales agreement between Saskatchewan Water Corporation and the City of Lloydminster. I'll ask Don Stank to present.
Thank you, city manager. Good afternoon, council. Uh before you, as a recommendation, that council approve the City of Lloydminster entry into an agreement with Saskatchewan Water Corporation for the supply of potable water for the purpose of redistribution to Saskatchewan Water Corporation customers. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. The City of Lloydminster was approached by Saskatchewan Water Corporation to enter into an agreement that would allow them to supply water uh to their customers. Administration provided an update to the negotiations and discussions with regards to this uh sales agreement on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, regular council meeting. Saskatchewan Water or Sask Water intends to supply potable water to their downstream users uh that fall outside an eight-kilometer or a five-mile buffer of the City of Lloydminster's municipal boundary. A copy of that map can be found on the attachment to the agenda item. The the other attachment there is going to show where the um point of sale is, which is anticipated to be on the east side of the intersection of Highway three oh three and Highway sixteen. An overview of the items included in the potable water sales agreement include, but are limited to, the establishes that Sask Water is responsible for all costs associated with connecting to the city's water distribution system. Establishes that Sask Water shall instruct and install the new water main. That the City of Lloydminster will take ownership of the infrastructure from the water treatment plant to the point of delivery just east of Highway three oh three and Highway sixteen, as I referred to earlier in Schedule. to the point of delivery just east of Highway three oh three and Highway sixteen, as I referred to earlier in Schedule A. Potable water sales are not to be permitted within the eight kilometer buffer as provided and shown in Schedule B attached. Establishes the rate until twenty twenty-two, which is consistent with the Alberta Central East Water Corporation agreement. Rates will be subject to change, with all rates being approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission. Sask Water will be responsible for capital projects proportionate to their share of the water uh, consumption. Daily limit on water usage that can be utilized of eight hundred cubic meters per day and is within the city's capacity. Peak waters established at one thousand cubic meters per day over a ten-day period only throughout the year. It's intended that the potable water will be supplied to Sask Water into the extended future, with the initial agreement being a twenty-year term with the ability to provide notice of termination after your initial five-year term. The alignment to the strategic plan, um, it uh, internal, external communication and relationship building, providing regional water strengths. The relationship between the city and its regional partners to provide more opportunities to work collaboratively on services to serve the region as a whole. As far as revenue, this will be additional revenue to the city as there is a revenue item attached to every cubic meter of water distributed to, through the agreement. I'll pass it back to you, your worship, if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Executive Manager Stang. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, one is uh, and I don't pretend to be a lawyer by any means, but it's good to see that we had legal review on this and we feel totally comfortable with them kind of being in our back pocket the whole way through. One of the things I did note is uh, the agreement isn't actually attached to anything and was that intentional? I know, I believe as council, we've seen it at some point in the past. Um, just I remember uh, when we did our ACE agreement, that there was slight variations believed to exist between the document we approved at the council level uh, versus what was ultimately signed.
Yes, thank you. It wasn't intentional not to attach the agreement for that exact lesson learned. Um, the agreement essentially has been approved by both parties in context. It has been reviewed by both legal parties. Uh, the schedules have been reviewed and approved. Now, there may be some slight modica, modifications to exactly where that pointed delivery system is, so once all those details are, are straightened out, uh, the full agreement will be provided to city clerk and the mayor for signature, at which point they would sign. So yes, it was, it was intentional based on lessons learned.
Yep. I, I was just clarifying that point, so that's, that's good to hear. Uh, one of the other things I noted is that uh, within this agreement, the approval of the rates are going to be performed by the Alberta Utilities Commission, which um, I assume is because of the point of sale or where the water's, I, I don't know why, I guess, why it would be coming from Alberta, but uh, I'd be interested to hear why. But given that it is, I think that's a good thing, given that we're more or less having an agreement with the government of Saskatchewan, so if they were the regulator as well as uh, the service kind of purchaser, uh, I prefer to have a third party having a say in what the rates are and what a fair rate is.
Yep. Thank you. It's a great, great question. Um, the rationale is the intent, and we've talked about this quite a bit from an administration perspective. The intent is to keep the rates the same um, to both regional partners we're selling water to. So in order to sell water to the ACE Corporation in Alberta, the rates are required to be approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission. Therefore, we will be taking those rates and applying them to this agreement. So those, those rates were established in the last agreement and expire in twenty-two. So we'll be in the process over the next year, year and a half to relook at those rates, ensure that they're, they're adequate, putting it through the approval profit, process for the Alberta Utilities Commission, and then those rates would transfer over into this agreement as well. So we're trying to unify and keep those rates consistent on both sides of the province. Again, another, another issue we deal with being a border city.
Counselor Buck, yeah.
Thank you, worship. As everybody knows, I love water agreements. And uh, so the one thing I wanted to say is when we're doing these things and we have these regional partnerships, and our water treatment plant requires upgrades and things like that, I think it also bodes very well that we can go back to our provincial government and say, look, we're not only providing water to the city of Lloydminster, we're going east, we're going west, we are a regional hub. And I think that always does better for you when you have to do those things. There are upgrades and different things that are going to have to happen to our water treatment facility. Keeping in mind, this is not the wastewater treatment plant, this is the actual water treatment facility, so nothing to do with our other big project. But I think that these regional uh, opportunities show leadership on the city's part and bodes well for future funding uh, and uh, and good neighboring relations. So I think it's a, it's a win.
Thanks, counselor.
Yeah, just, just to provide comment to that, just to add to that, um, it's twofold, right? The, the first part of that being each of those corporations that are utilizing our water would pay proportionate to a capital expense that's required to uh, be implemented at the plant to, in, in order to provide that funding, but it also gives us huge, huge, a good advantage when it comes to grant applications and applying for grants in the future, that exactly what you spoke to as a regional, a regional distributor for water for the entire region, um, bodes well for us.
Counselor Dajak. Thanks, worship. I, I guess sort of just to pull that apart a little bit more, so um, the two questions. The first one, I guess, is that because we're kind of, we, we will be the owners and we will be accessing government funds and they will be contributing dollars into the basically the infrastructure or the water out. However, there are two questions around that. At some point, is there any indemnity on the parts of the other institutions in Saskatchewan to contribute towards capital upgrades, or will we have to be reliant upon local taxpayer and the government to upgrade? And the second part of that question is that how long do we anticipate our capacity, population to grow before we're going to have to hit that upgrade?
Yeah, it's some, some really good questions. Um, the best way to answer this, this agreement doesn't impact um, you know, when, when the city would require an upgrade. And I don't believe it has any impact on the government to provide funding for any upgrade, so I don't think it changes how we operate in those contexts. It does give us the ability to apply and get better grants uh, provided. Um, we do have some capacity left in that facility and, and something we've talked about it a lot um, uh, internally as, as an administration is at what point does that plant become, become uh, over, overtaxed? It still has quite a bit, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can definitely get those for council. Uh, we're, we're not operating at a twenty-four hour um, perspective yet, so we still have significant growth to go. Uh, we do have some ability to still take on some additional um, many uh, users of water, I guess, is the best way to put that. Uh, so we do have some capacities in order to fit some of our economic development opportunities that may come forward. Um, as far as those capital expenses, again, the agreements on both sides, you know, I'll include both agreements would be proportionate to their capital funding and there is capital percentage included in that rate they're paying that would go towards those capital improvements, so we are collecting a little bit of that at uh, every turn. Now, when you look at proportion, this agreement uh, right now, as it sits today, only distributes eight, eight hundred cubic meters per day at a maximum. While we're, we're producing, I believe, close to ten or eleven or twelve thousand cubic meters a day to supply the reserve. So you can take that into um, context about how much proportion would be coming back through those, those two agreements. So it's pretty minimal, but it still gives us those advantages of being a regional distribution hub for water and hopefully those quantities grow over time to allow us more, more funding for capital infrastructure as it comes forward.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity and there's strength in doing the regional application to get you know, these one-time capital costs out of the way and, and uh, everybody benefits in that context. My concern is that down the road, if you have relationships that may, may fray a little bit because of whatever else is going on, uh, when there's a time for an application for some new capital, there may not be as much willingness to apply as a region for the upgrades. And, and then secondarily, I guess my fear in some of this, and it may be unfounded, but is that we end up with the operational costs. Regional municipalities end up with the capital costs, which tend to be one-time. Like I guess, you know, as I hear the cost of the water and, and the dollars will be coming in, uh, I'm wondering, are we going to be treating this like we do with our stormwater levies, so the any, any dollars and cents we, we reap from selling water goes into reserve, that then goes towards any of those upgrades? Is that how we're, is that the plan, or is that a plan to be determined, or?
Well, the, the rate's already established to recoup cost plus capital plus profit, so we're already we're, we're, we are taking on, yes, additional expenses, but those are incorporated into, into the rate, and those were established under the ACE agreement when that was uh, taken into context.
But we're spending them as we go, I guess? Are, are we setting aside in the event, that point in time, and we may need to, let's say twenty years, just pick a number, need to do some capital upgrades, whatever, or even maintenance?
Yes, we're, we're currently looking at our utility model. Uh, one of the things we're currently in the process of looking at and how those funds get allocated to, to reserves and fund other utilities, so that's, that's a bigger picture item. We definitely have orderator to talk as we move forward.
Just to be clear, Counselor, too, um, this agreement is with Sask Water, so if we go to uh, for example, we do a capital upgrade, we won't be going to the village of Marshall and town of Lashburn to get those dollars. Our dollars will be coming through Sask Water uh, to recoup for capital and operating costs, and then they'll be collecting their dollars through the villages or the town uh, that they supply water to. So we won't be, we won't have to go to the village of Marshall or to Lashburn or to any others to collect those capital fees.
Thank you, city manager.
And I think the, as Counselor Buckingham alluded to, I think that their voices can be heard. The other way though, they'll be to the benefit, because they, they at the end of the day are the consumer of the water. Sask Water's the provider uh, or the distributor. But from a perspective that having the villages or the village of Marshall and the town of Lashburn being able to speak up behalf on their half and uh, with another MLA as well uh, from that perspective uh, in the discussions, it helps to bring that uh, forward in grant applications. And we heard that very clearly during the Municipalities of Saskatchewan convention numerous times. Regionalization, working with your partners and those kind of things. And I think that's the message we've heard previous council heard very clearly from the governments, and I suspect it's going to continue. And as you said, Counselor, what are we going to be up against when we get there? That's one that uh, no one really knows. Uh, that, that was, question was be, uh, was posed to the premier, because that is the question, how are we going to deal with water and sewer in the long term for every community? Doesn't matter if it's a city, uh, the village of Marshall, town of Lashburn, we all have challenges. I don't know if the provinces come up with a solution yet. We'll keep uh, we'll keep letting them know.
Thank you, City Manager.
Very good.
Yeah, just, just to kind of finish that comment from your last, last question too, is, you know, I see our water treatment plant needing potential improvements based on the age of the facility uh, in the near, in, in a closer future than we would be seeing us be at the maximum capacity. So there's, there will be work coming forward within our water treatment plant. I, I suspect it would more than likely be attributed to our aging facility improvement requirements, um, additional redundancy added into that facility versus we're at our max capacity and we have to build a new one. So I hope that answers that. And then secondly, there's, there's additional benefit to the city too with the, you know, I talked about Sask Waters building the pipeline from the water treatment plant to their point of delivery out at eight oh eight, the line then from, or sorry, Highway three oh three, the line from three oh three then back to the water treatment plant becomes our infrastructure. So they pay to put it in, we then take it over and we can use that to expand our services in those areas as well. So there's, there's significant benefit to that infrastructure as well.
Yeah, I, I think that the regionalization approach is, is a good one. Uh, the, the piece for me is that there's so many unknowns, particularly in Saskatchewan. Uh, Doug Griffiths, I mean chastised um, municipality Saskatchewan about the number of municipalities they had and said, you know, you guys get to figure this out. Uh, so as that figuring out begins to occur to the east, uh, you know, it's kind of, what is that going to look like? Uh, what impact will I have on our agreements? I mean, I, I think the upside is to hear the agreement with Sask Water and not the initial or, or the municipalities. So I think that's a safeguard that's important from our perspective. Uh, but I would anticipate that the, you know, Mother Hubbard has a fair cupboard and a lot of municipalities, in spite of, you know, being, being given some sense of hope around having shovel-ready projects and, and we've seen lots being made really in large part, it's a reaction to COVID. Uh, but there, you know, tremendous number of infrastructure projects that are, that are just continuing to emerge on, on either side of the border. I guess the uh, the safety valve for me frankly, is the fact that the agreements with Sask Water and not the individual municipalities.
Yeah, and to, like, we don't even mention those municipalities within the agreement. So what we, what we did differently than the last one is we, we went for a no resale zone, so that's the eight kilometer. So outside of that eight kilometer, Sask Water can distribute to whatever customer they feel is beneficial, beneficial for their business uh, business plan. That would include some municipalities as well as other users in the region.
As long as they stay within their eight hundred cubic meters.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, city manager.
Counselor Torson, anything else?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh, no, I just, you know, to, to build a little bit on the regional collaboration, Counselor Marin and I, over the last Thursday and the next two Thursdays, are taking a course on regional collaboration um, put on by A U M A. And uh, I know just sharing with, with the group uh, generally on the fact that we are looking towards having, you know, servicing agreements outside of our boundaries um, without even the need for it with an ICF or anything like that, and just kind of putting our best foot forward. Sure, the structure doesn't necessarily look the same as you might see in other municipalities where there's a cooperative more or less on the west that we're sharing it with, and a crown corporation on the east, but um, I still think that it's our best foot forward in terms of showing that uh, that we are willing to you know, play ball with our, our neighbors and, and try and do what we can to help uh, improve the quality of life for the region and hopefully have growth in the region in general, and and that's why I think that doing projects like this are good and, and necessary when we can do them. Thank you.
Exec vendors thing, um, on Schedule A, and I appreciate both Schedule A and Schedule B. Uh, Schedule A talks about a proposed route. Is that uh, almost in stone, basically, because going back to some previous experiences, uh, just being sure that we know what we're getting and what's council, so you're asking council to authorize?
Yes, as far as I understand, it is, uh, we did have two options there. We did narrow it down to this one option uh, within the last week prior to it being needed to be submitted for, for council. Uh, within our boundary, I think that's pretty much a lock. Um, there may have to be some a little bit of tweaks just as it exits our boundary, depending on some other things that are going on around around rail and, and other developments, but as far as, you know, common path, that's, that's the common path. And then again, with the delivery point, um, there was an established delivery point through discussion with them uh, east of three oh three, so they're working on uh, looking at potential spots to land that, that pointed delivery station. So at that station would be a meter. So we, that would be where we would read how much water we're sending down the system. So again, that might shift a little bit too, but we've, from a city's perspective, we made it fairly, fairly clear that it had to be relatively close and, and not a major change as we've seen it happen under the last agreement. So, so again, lots of lessons learned and we made sure we uh, we, we protected ourselves a little bit better through, through here.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Uh, one of the things that happened last time with ACE was we upsized the pipeline from the distribution center to the transfer point. Is that uh, in the plan as well? Because that'll be a budgetary implication to buy some pipe, I suspect. The cheap part is the pipe, as we've talked about in the past. I think the trench is pretty expensive. Is there going to be a requirement for some capital?
Yes, that'll be an item we'll bring back at a future date, once we have uh, better understanding what that cost is. Again, that's to our benefit. Um, you know, there, uh, we've had some, well, quite a few discussions around it. Uh, there's not going to be an additional cost with regards to the trenching or construction uh, method. If we choose to have a, let, let's, I'm just going to use a, if two hundred is the design and we're asking for a four hundred, we're just paying material difference. So again, we'll, we'll bring that forward to, to council at a future date. And that's not really conducive to the agreement, it's a, an additional benefit to the city, so.
Yeah, absolutely, but I just want to make sure that public is aware that once the trench is open, we're going to get the best But I just want to make sure that public is aware that once the trench is open, we're going to get the best value that the city can for, for the value at that time. Because it would be detrimental, I think, for all of us to dig a trench and put a pipe in and then say, oh, by the way, we missed our, our, our piece on that, so.
Yes, just to give you, in light of what that pipeline's going to serve, it'll serve our new mechanical wastewater treatment plant, uh, with potable water in the future. And then it'll be providing, uh, potential expansion opportunities in the entire west, west half of the city. Um, north of Highway sixty.
Terrific. Any other questions?
No, just answered all mine.
Okay. I think that's all my notes here that I had, uh. Yeah, no, I think that covered it. All right, if there's no further questions, I will look for counsel for direction on seven point five point one. Counselor Whitey.
I move that council approved, yeah, that council approved the C of Lloydminster. That this prove this, prove that City of Lloydminster enter into an agreement with SASS Saskatchewan Water Corporation for the supply of potable water for the purpose of redistribution to Saskatchewan Water Corporation customers. In addition, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you, Counselor Secundar, Counselor Dycheck. Is there any further discussion or comments on the motion at hand? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Executive Manager Stank. Moving on to item number eight.
Yeah, just before that, Your Worship, just to thank Dawn and, and our lead services team, uh, did a lot of work. That was a two-year, two or three-year process to get that agreement finalized and a lot of hard work and a lot of back and forth. And so good work by, by Dawn and, and that services team had a lot to do with that as well.
I think that, uh, they can express an appreciation from the government of Saskatchewan too, because they had identified this project as a funding project through ISIP, I believe it was. So there's multiple funding partners to the, the work they're doing. And, uh, I think that this is a, sends a very good message to our neighbors to the east and, uh, and to the province of Saskatchewan that we are working with our neighbors, so. Thank you.
Go for eight point one, bylaw number one dash twenty twenty-one supplementary assessment bylaw. I'll ask Scott Purdy to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and Council.
Good afternoon, Scott.
Our recommendation is that council grant second and third, second, third and final reading to bylaw number zero one dash twenty twenty-one supplementary assessment bylaw. Council is required by Lloydminster Charter to annually authorize supplementary assessments. To impose a tax on properties that have been substantially completed or further constructed during the current year, which were not captured in the current property assessment, administration is requesting direction from council to pass the supplementary assessment bylaw. Section two, six, one of the Lloydminster Charter states, if the city wishes to require a preparation of supplementary assessments for improvements, council must pass the supplementary assessment bylaw authorizing the assessments to be prepared for the purpose of imposing a tax under part ten in the same year. Option one is the council approved the motions as indicated in the recommendation above. Option two is the council does not grant second reading to the bylaw. Or option three, the council recommends change to the bylaw and bring back to a further council meeting. And under governance implications, uh, bylaw number zero one dash twenty twenty-one repeals bylaw number zero four twenty twenty, which was our twenty twenty supplementary assessment bylaw. Pass it back to You Worship for any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. Questions or comments? Counselor Torres.
I would be prepared to make the motion.
Well, I'll, I'll look around. I don't see any hands coming up. I think, uh, I would entertain that motion with that.
I move that council grant, uh, boy, second reading to bylaw number zero one dash two thousand twenty-one supplementary assessment bylaw.
Also seconded by Counselor Fagin, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion before I call the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor, if you'd be so kind.
I move that council grant third and final reading to bylaw number zero one dash two thousand twenty-one supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Fagin, thank you very much for the secondary. Any further discussion on the last reading of this bylaw? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Scott. I would entertain a short recess. I'd look for a motion. Counselor Dycheck makes motion for recess. Counselor Marion. Returning back to the agenda of eight point two, I'll look to the City Manager.
Thank you, Your Worship, for eight point two, bylaw number two dash twenty twenty-one amendment to the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting development permits. I'll ask Caitlin Luster to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council.
Good afternoon, Caitlin.
The recommendation is that council grant first reading to bylaw number zero two dash twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting discretionary use applications. And that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at two P M. The purpose of the bylaw number two dash twenty twenty-one is to adjust the process and consideration used to render a decision on a discretionary use application as the current land use bylaw does not. At the December seventh Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, administration presented a report regarding adding discretionary uses to several land use districts. This brought forth questions related to the discretionary use applications, especially with respect to process and evaluation considerations. In addition, as Terry stated at the January twenty-fifth regular council meeting, over the past six months, there have been more comments about wanting transparency in our processes, including the discretionary use process. In response, administration completed a review of the permitting process for discretionary use applications and prepared an amendment to the land use bylaw that aligns with the best practices of comparable municipalities. Saskatchewan municipalities are required to include in their land use, or sorry, in their zoning bylaws, the procedures for approval of discretionary use applications and the criteria used when rendering a decision. Alberta municipalities are not required to do the same under the municipal, sorry, the municipal government act. However, several of the municipalities land use bylaws reviewed do cover discretionary use procedures in more detail. The practice of including procedures as well as general evaluation considerations for reviewing discretionary use applications will increase clarity and transparency for the public and developers, as well as solidify administration's processes as guided by the principles within the land use bylaw. The evaluation considerations include topics such as compliance with statutory plans, availability of more appropriate land, serviceability, impacts to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons in the area, adequate landscaping and screening, building sizes, shapes and real, a layout to reflect the character of the neighborhood, additional traffic generation, cumulative effects in the area, uh, addresses the amenity needs of individuals utilizing the development, pedestrian safety and convenience, and complying with all other provincial and federal requirements. Additional proposed changes include adding to the list of required materials for development permit applications, adding a policy stating the development authority is to have regard for the evaluation considerations, and extending the list of conditions that the development authority may prescribe to discretionary use applications. Based on the re- review that was completed, administration will bring forward an explanation of the development permit process, which will farm, form part of the city's municipal planning process document. This will be brought forward at the second reading, if it does come forward. As part of the bylaw amendment process, referrals were sent to internal departments, external agencies, the building and development community, and members of public with twenty-one days to comment. Should first reading be granted, a public hearing will be held prior to second and third reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? I think the first thing that comes to mind is the clarity and transparency that you've talked about a couple of times here for not just the, the builders or developers, but for the community as well as council and administration, because I think that's always the question. Who has the authority and who grants that authority and what are the review processes? You've got a fairly lengthy package with us, which I appreciate and, uh, uh, go from there. And I look forward to at least reading through it with it all amended with the, if the first by, uh, reading passes so we can get a better grasp of that. And I'm sure the community will ask the same because as we've talked about in this council and previous council, planning is very important. And, uh, it's, it needs to be clear and concise enough that the builders and developers can actually move forward. Uh, but it can't hinder it, but at the same token, we don't want to have high rises and one stories and varied mix. Uh, going down the street is an example where cars are parked on top of each other, so. Counselor Dycheck.
Thanks, Your Worship. All right, Caitlin, I, I have to admit that this is one area that I probably know the least about in terms of city operation. It gives me the greatest degree of discomfort because as we look at zoning and then changing it, you're going, oh my God, why are we changing it? And why didn't we get it right the first time? The reality is things change, so, you know, I can accept the fact that we change it. Um, from your perspective in the planning department, how will this new bylaw work better than the old one? Maybe three key things.
Um, it's actually not changing our process at all. It's really just solidifying it and kind of just reporting it on paper so that everyone can see what's happening. So it really doesn't change anything. The development officers at this time can do anything that's described in this comparison document or in the bylaw, I should say.
So this just pulls it all together, so it's in one spot, then everybody can read it from the same spot.
Right, and so then it actually says in the land use bylaw, you know, it refers to discretionary uses, so the process is very clear.
Okay.
Is there any other benefits that you can share with us? Or that's pretty much the?
Transparency and clarity.
Transparency and clarity, okay, fair enough.
No free tins or anything, I don't think.
No. Any other questions or comments? Caitlin, they talked about, uh, the twenty-one day referral period, so it's gone out, but we haven't had, that, that twenty-one day period hasn't expired yet.
Not yet.
No, so, no, but when it comes back for public hearing, if it is passed after the first reading, you'll be able to comment on that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
I'll entertain a motion, Counselor.
All right, I move that council grant first reading to bylaw number zero two dash twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting discretionary use applications and that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at two P M.
Thank you. I'll look for a secondary, Counselor Whitey, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion on hand? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to you coming back.
Thanks.
Moving on to, uh, bylaws eight point three to the City Manager.
Thanks, Your Worship, uh, for eight point three, bylaw number three dash twenty twenty-one amendment to the land use bylaw, respecting residential uses. I will ask Anthony Andre to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council.
Good afternoon, Anthony.
The recommendation is that council grant second and third readings to bylaw number three dash twenty twenty-one, of being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting residential uses. The purpose of the amendment is to correct a large number of legal non-conforming residential uses and encourage development consistent with the goals and policies of the municipal development plan, downtown area. Downtown area redevelopment plan as well as various other area structure plans. The current land use by law is very limited in the housing types accommodated in each district compared to many municipalities throughout Alberta and Saskatchewan. It is important to note that the previous zoning by law in place prior to the adoption of land use by law. In twenty sixteen included a much broad broader list of residential uses. While the intent of limiting the number of housing types within each district of the land use by law may have been to increase predictability. It also created a large number of legal nonconforming residential properties. In addition to this, the lack of flexibility of the land use districts limits infill opportunities. And hampers efforts to create neighborhoods that provide for a range of housing choices. To suit different lifestyles, income. Special needs. And life cycle demands as described in section eight point three of the municipal development plan. The proposed amendment is anticipated to provide the following benefits. Correct hundreds of examples of legal nonconforming situations which would allow properties to be expanded or reconstructed should they be destroyed. Better align the land use by law districts with cities area structure plans. Municipal development plan and the downtown area redevelopment plan. And to encourage incremental infill development in established neighborhoods. Information pertaining to the draft by law and public hearing was advertised January twenty eighth, February fourth. And February eleventh in the Canadian source. This information along with the comparison document outlining the proposed amendment was sent to all respondents of the referral process. Two weeks prior to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Questions, comments? Counselor.
Thank you worship. I have lots of questions um around this and I just wondered. Just for clarity and for the for the public's benefit in in this type of thing and as for as much as my own. So if you've and to be honest, I just hear councillor Baker in my in my mind every time I see one of these zoning pieces. If I bought a property in a certain area, I expect that that area is going to be what it's supposed to be, what it was laid out to be, right? The two seven hundred thousand dollar houses and the vacant lot in the middle, I would assume that I'm going to have a seven hundred thousand dollar house built in between those two things. What in this proposed amendment changes? Does that change? Does it make it better? Does it take away the ability to do that? Does it add the ability to do that? You know, when we're looking at long range planning. What are we looking to achieve here? Do we have a policy that we're buying back lots, for example, um from? If we change something completely from what it was, I just, I'm really looking for some more clarity on exactly what it means.
Right, I I think the argument um is that we're trying to make is that the uses that we've added here. Um are not out of line um in terms of form, density, uh intensity um to what's already existing, so. For example, um a use such as a duplex or a semi detached um property. It still is is very similar again in form density um to that of a a single detached dwelling. Um it's consistent with the uh area structure plans for neighborhoods such as lakeside which include. Which includes those uses as low density, um which is pretty common um throughout Alberta and Saskatchewan and and the rest of the the rest of the country.
For me, I I think our job is to take care of people and to make sure that we're providing what we said we were going to do. And you know, when it when it comes to planning and stuff like that, I'd be pretty disappointed if. Beside my house, it wasn't another house, right? There was there was, you know, we want to make sure we have opportunities. I just wonder about painting the whole city with the same brush was my other comment. Downtown, um you could do a lot bigger density because people are used to that, you know, I think. Than at College Park or a lakeside or or where I live, um. Is there, are we opening up a huge kind of worms by painting the city with one whole brush as opposed to having? A by law that specifically says this is allowed here and not allowed there?
I wouldn't say so, um I I mean, it it was. Four or five years ago, under the last zoning by law that we did allow these uses. Um much of the city was developed under those regulations, um so. Many of these properties do already exist, I I truthfully don't feel that this is inconsistent with what's been constructed, what's been constructed previously.
Yeah, I can appreciate, as a matter of fact, I really appreciate the fact that we're we're not. Being in inclusive, we're trying to be as inclusive as possible to people from all walks of life to to live their own dream, right? Whatever that is, right? So I I think that's good, but I just worry about the people that have property. That what this is going to change for them versus what they were thinking they were going to get when they purchased that property. That's my biggest concern and I've read this fifty times if I've read it once. I'm still not clear a hundred percent that I'm comfortable voting in favor of all the amendment amended changes. But I want to make sure that the people that have purchased specific areas. Get what they've asked for from the city without us coming back and changing the rules. That's my biggest concern.
Thank you, manager Sting.
Yeah. Sorry, excuse me. If I if I hear you correct councillor, it's really in regards to the R one zoning and adding the duplex. Discretionary use.
Yeah, or any kind of, you know, high density in a in a place that isn't. Not that I shouldn't say high density, any kind of extra density that's not like in an R one.
Yeah, so so my understanding, so right now, we're not adding, we're not adding anything permitted to R one zoning. So R one zoning permitted stays the same, single detached. Currently, single or currently semi detached, which is defined, and I think the definitions were attached here. Are defined as um. Now, I always mix these up because they're different than what I remember growing up. Um semi detached is shared.
Side by side.
Side by side, yeah, so duplex from where I come from, I guess, but semi detached is side by side. Uh so that that was, that was um. That was already discretionary, correct me if I'm wrong. Why are we adding discretionary?
That was.
No, we're adding that discretionary, so the duplex, which is the up and down, which would be those additional. Densities that you're talking about are already permitted to be discretionary. So the other things that apply here, and we just talked about it and Caitlin went through that discretionary process. All the checks and balances that have to uh come into consideration when an application like that would come forward, does it fit the neighborhood? Uh does it fit uh within what uh? What requirements or the look and feel of that neighborhood and all the other things Caitlin talked about? Um the other side of that is there are setbacks, so a side by side uh semi detached. Is going to require a lot more land than the duplex and down would require. So when something like that, if somebody came in and had two lots and they wanted to consolidate two lots to put a duplex on it. Again, that would have to go through the planning process in order to get that consolidation completed and be brought forward. So I do understand what you're saying with regards to now. We currently don't have semi detached in the discretionary use within R one. And I guess the question to Anthony is how many do we see coming forward? Where it would start to look at affecting neighborhoods?
I'm not really sure how to answer that, um I mean.
That's what you're asking, right? Like, yeah, yeah.
Most of the, most of the neighborhoods are, you know, fairly built out already, so I mean it. You know, the likelihood that you're going to see an influx of semi detached. Is pretty unlikely.
As we're, as we're going through this new discretionary use piece. Just enlighten me again on how much consultation is done. With adjacent landowners in a situation like this when we get down to discretionary thing because every discretionary use doesn't come back to council. We'd be sitting here doing discretionary use things all day long, every day if that were the case. So how much consultation is done? What's the process? How long does it take? To get those discretionary uses through?
Generally speaking, I believe the process takes about two to three weeks. Um should there not be a lot of controversy or a lot of things to consider? Um and a an application for a semi detached would certainly be uh towards the lower end of that for sure.
Yeah, I I guess the other thing around that is there there would have to be a reason not to permit it, right? Like the, if there is an application like, so you are correct, we are allowing an additional. Semi detached to be discretionary in an area. So I go back to the presentation we just had where Caitlin talked about, there's there's a list of. Maybe ten to twenty, twenty items that that get taken into consideration when a discretionary use comes in, so. All those have to be checks and balances through that process and. You're correct, that doesn't come back to council. Every time that discretionary use comes forward, so we are asking for some additional flexibility there. But it still has to meet planning standards and it still has to meet. The neighborhood look and feel and it has to be something that is deemed acceptable. To the planning department and the development officer. Um why would we turn away if if there was a development? Or a duplex, uh for example, in an R one zone, what would be the rationale not to allow that? So to me, it would be additional parking requirements, potential additional. Traffic for now, two families on one parcel. Um those are going to be scattered within a development, they won't be a full neighborhood of duplexes or semi detaches going in. So we would take all those considerations on each application and do that evaluation. Um and process our due diligence to make sure that it isn't harmful to the community. And that it does support growth and it does. Fit the neighborhoods with regards to what was proposed and what's coming forward. I hope that explains it, it's hard, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, um it is our job to oversee it to a point. It is not our job to dive into the weeds and and get really in depth into all of this stuff. Um we have to trust that that uh the people in planning are going to make the appropriate decisions. And and we do, I mean, that's that's what we're doing, right? And we're getting, giving a little bit more um leeway to do that. But it's going to, I just want to be able to answer to it when we get asked the questions about it. And trusting that you guys are doing everything you're doing and I'm not saying you're not. I just need to answer to it.
All good? Counselor Torsten.
Thank you, your worship. I kind of look at things very much in the opposite direction here as my colleague councillor Buckingham. Um I actually think it's a great idea because we're starting with, you know, the highest density. And allowing lower density units within that, not necessarily taking a low density and forcing an apartment building where. There was only low density there before. It's it's allowing those smaller densities to exist within that larger density area. And the kicker to make sure that it's not necessarily throwing off. Um you know, new neighborhoods, I just bought this house, I just bought this lot, it's totally different from what I thought I was getting. Uh it's, it really depends on what was there before as to whether or not that rule can be true, so we're talking about putting. Single detached back where single detached was before within an R four zone. Um so to me, it's 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 making that kind of filtering downwards with the most uses available in those highest density areas. And working our way downwards until, you know, the the low density areas have, you know, more or less the fewest uses or the most. Appropriate uh density of the, you know, just the duplex and single detached. And the fact that it had duplex and not single detached before, uh to me was almost just something that was accidentally overlooked, if anything, because we're talking about something that has. Two homes, it's just a matter of how you stack them and arrange them, so. Really, that that one is the same in my eyes, um and then working our way all the way down, I think it's just more beneficial and provides more opportunity to. Ensure that you've got the right housing mix where people aren't forced to do something different than, you know, what they already did have. And yeah, the fact that it it's about existing neighborhoods and not new properties, I think to me makes it more or less a. A straightforward slam dunk for something that I feel pretty comfortable with approving. Uh just because we are putting lower density into higher density areas and not high density into low density. So for that reason, I I think it's it's easy for me to support. Um and I I also think that it's important that we provide a good housing mix within our neighborhoods, we don't want simply. Rich neighborhood, poor neighborhood and things like that, because yes, that may work for Lloydminster in the specific neighborhoods that they are right now, but we're talking about. In over a hundred year span, you know, municipalities should theoretically live forever. We don't want to have them. Have an awkward mix of of what they need to be on a very large neighborhood scale, which when we look at the area structure plans and the amount of space they take up within our community. You know, those can be pretty big if they're all mansions in, you know, one neighborhood when there should be. You know, movement mixes within a neighborhood, which is normally what we request out of our area structure plans when they're being presented to us and. You know, complete neighborhoods rather than just one thing, so. You know, in general, I think that uh that it's good and I think it's a good proposal to be able to. Uh allow the planning department to be able to essentially give the same use to. Properties that they already had if they've been changed at some point. Um just based on our aspirational plans, but not forcing landowners to go towards our aspirational plan. Thank you.
Just for clarity, this would apply to new subdivisions that are. Yet developed out as well, so if there's, you know, park view, for example. R ones within that park view, this discretionary then would apply to those lots as well, so just wanted wanted to put that clarity out there.
Thank you, councillor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh certainly, this, you know, this is brought to us a couple of times and I've asked a lot of questions, a lot of them. Dumb, a lot of them that have informed me at the same time. And uh each time that this comes up, I'm I'm just, I'm getting a better picture of what it entails and uh more confident with it each time and. Uh you know, we can have probably three different perspectives here, one looking at uh low density and the fear of getting. Too high of density, maybe with duplex being discretionary beside it, then you got the other side of it, which is. Uh allowing for a lower density inside of what is already high density and and then there's there's this perspective of. Well, what, you know, should we be encouraging infill and and densifying our our core in order to uh utilize the infrastructure that's already there and and. And decrease the sprawl and the cost of sprawl and all that, so. It's it's another perspective that 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 for me is one that comes forward when I look at this and see that, you know, we are allowing for. For uh lower density now in some of our higher density and and good, bad or otherwise, you know, that's that's what this is. But I do, I, you know, what I can take away from this is that there is a lot of questions that come up every time that this land use uh comes, you know, is discussed and. I'm I'm thankful that we do have a an upcoming. Uh information session about uh land use and to further educate us and I don't know if there's a way to. You know, dive into these a little bit deeper, um you know, outside of a regular council or something, you know, and. An information or an online training or something that we can really dive into these and and get a little bit more information rather than, you know, asking some. Awkward questions maybe, I don't know. Um but after going through this a couple of times, I definitely am more encouraged by by uh by what I see here and and do. I like the fact that there's got these asterisks on here about uh. That doesn't allow for a single detached, that there is no single detached in like an R three and R four as an example, so that. I am more confident and and I know there's, you can play all sorts of different scenarios of um. You know, and the R ones where there are already strictly R ones and then, well, what if somebody wants to put a duplex or semi detached? Well, you know, I I I highly doubt that that would happen if it's a neighborhood that is. You know, already, I just have confidence in our discretionary use and our planning committee or our planning group for. For looking into this without making harsh or quick calls, so. Um what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I'm I'm happy with it with all the questions that have been asked over the couple of times here. I just would wonder how we can get more, get this clarified. Easier in future. As it comes to council in future times.
Executory manager Sting or?
Yeah, just just. Contemplating the question from councillor Buckingham, because we want to make sure you're comfortable and we can provide a response. Is, can can you? Is, can, can you repeat the question so we can? I know it was a lot. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Is it a, is it the issue that um, there may be potential developments out there within R one? Where now those lots could be developed into a semi-detached or a duplex? When the neighbor assumed there was going to be an R one beside it? Is that the context of the question?
That's my, my biggest concern is providing people about they thought they were buying when they bought, you know, if we, if we have a whole piece, a huge chunk of bare land and we're going to develop it, then we go out for referrals and everything else. That's one thing. But if there's partially developed parcels of the city that have a bare piece of land besides something, that's my biggest concern for sure.
Okay. So with, within the context of what we currently have and what the plan contemplates is that right now you could have that multifamily or that multi-dwelling unit already there discretionary. So all we're adding is the definition of a duplex as well as a semi-detached. Or we would have to contemplate going the other direction of not permitting or sorry, not adding those as discretionary use in R one and just having R one as R one.
I guess the other, the other part of it is you can't compare one part of the city to the other, right? That's the biggest, the biggest thing, right? And that was my other concern was we're going like this and we should do this and this and this perhaps.
Yes.
You know, as an option, your downtown is different than your southwest corner, right? So that's, that's my other concern.
Just, just to throw it out there, sorry, well, if, if council do so wishes to not take these readings forward today, we can definitely try and formulate a better response than what we're providing you with regards to how the concept of what, what our planning departments bring in forward so that you can see maybe in that picture that it is kind of paintbrushing it, but it appears to be a blanket. So we can, we can try and provide some better clarity on that if, if council wishes to, to take that direction today.
You know, for, for me, it's, it, no matter whether, whether it's this decision or any other one, I have to be a hundred percent confident in the, in the way that I vote for these things. I have to be able to explain it a hundred percent and right or wrong, I'm just not there today. Personally, that's just me.
I got counsel.
Yeah, I, I think a couple of things around us and I, those two tables that are up there, I think are extremely important. Uh, because really the change is in there, the ones at the top is already in place. And what we're hearing is that there are people that are in a bind if in fact, as the example was brought forward, where, you know, they lost a home to whatever, you know, the fire or whatever it is, then they can't go back in and rebuild back what they wanted to in the first place. So we need to take care of those guys. Uh, everybody needs to be taken care of in the city. The second part is when you look at it, I think it's, the challenge for me was going from one document to the other, to the other and trying to put it together. Um, and I, I, when I, for me, the biggest piece was going to the definitions and then working backwards to this chart. And then seeing in fact that really the, what we're doing is really just putting more detail into the definitions to make it easier for somebody to understand what's in each of those categories and what's not in those categories or what's discretionary and what isn't. And, and I think that for me was the core of, you know, the, the information that I saw there. Uh, and, and I agree with counselor Torres and, you know, in terms of, you know, the diversity where you're looking at high density versus low density. Uh, the fear of someone building a uh, duplex in, you know, park view between two seven hundred or lakeside into seven hundred thousand dollar homes, that's a discretionary use now and it will be going forward. So there's no change on that. All we've done is said, you know what, it's R one, it's discretionary. And we're just tightening up the, you know, the, I think the ability to give a good rationale as to why or why not it shouldn't be in there. So I'm, you know, the, each time as, as council wedding, so each time you read through this, I'm, I'm feeling more comfortable about it, even though this is not my, my real house at all. Uh, but, but these two tables parallel alongside of the definitions, I think are the two pieces that go together. And frankly, it's pretty tough to give a simple answer without having those two pieces of information in front of you. So my, my comfort level is a lot better today then.
Counselor Mary.
Thank you, your worship. So um, I had asked for some, some learning sessions around zoning and I, I'm looking forward to that session. Um, I wish I had had it before we, we were looking at this, but I, I've read it many times and, and I feel like um, what counselor Dycheck said was we're really just adding the semi-detached to the duplex in the R one. Both would be discretionary and there are some controls around neighborhoods, what the design of the home looks like in size. And is that correct?
Not a whole lot from the city side. Um, I mean, in, in the discretionary use uh, process, if something was really, really funny looking, um, uh, that didn't meet the, you know, the aesthetic of the neighborhood at all, um, we would have some grounds of refusing it. Um, however, um, probably the best, the best set of architectural standards would come from, at least in the case of a new development from the developer themselves, who often have architectural standards to be able to build in their neighborhoods.
How long does that last? Does it stay with?
To tell you the truth, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
They're usually registered on as a caveat within the lot. So if you buy a lot there from a developer, you have to follow the developers.
So I think that offers a level of protection as well. Um, but I, I really like the idea of, you know, when I look at the R three and R four and, you know, creating community where we can have a nice mix of different types of housing. Uh, for me is really attractive and I think long-term for, for what we want to do in the city or what, you know, I would see as the vision for the city, that makes a lot of sense. And, and it is still discretionary, so someone's eyes are going to be on it that has access to all of these other guiding documents that will help make those decisions. So I um, I, I think I, I have pretty good confidence in it. The only other thing I was wondering about was you have included a map for us with all of this zoning and um, it's probably too much work, but I, how much difference would that map look like? If we were to overlay what's now proposed or does that even make sense to do? You know the map I'm talking about?
Yeah, the, the map itself won't change. Um, I'm trying to think how we could do that graphically or you're wanting to see.
So R one still R one, but it wouldn't actually add in any of the discretionary uses. Remain yellow?
It'll, yes, the, the districts themselves won't change. Um, it's just a, it's just changing the uses that are allowed within those areas.
So discretionary uses would be outside of what you would put on the map.
Right.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anthony, if I can take you back, if I may, um, the proposed amendment will correct hundreds of examples of legal non-conforming situations. I know this was revisited five years ago, I believe, by council of the time. So how long has, like, we've kind of got a, a series of things that have went on and now we're trying to, and, and I see where you're headed, you want to clean it up and this will help clean it up. How did this kind of happen? We, with the, in twenty twelve or prior to twenty sixteen, whenever that bylaw was there, was that a different? Are we going back to what we were basically had? You can't explain that a little bit just to provide a little clarity because we've seen we've moved and all of a sudden now we've got hundreds of non-legal conforming. What we're trying to do is bring it back. So when did we kind of go differently?
Sure, uh, thanks for that question. Um, right, so under the, the zoning bylaw, which uh, was replaced in twenty sixteen, we had, we had similar districts, we had R one, R two, R three, R four, R five. Um, or, or, or four A and R five, R four A and R four, sorry. Um, but similar, similar districts, the diff, the, um, the difference was that those districts did allow more uses in them. Um, so uh, for example, there's, there's several uh, areas, cul-de-sacs in places like uh, College Park and, and uh, Lakeside that have, uh, that are zoned R two. So the intent at the time was to allow semi-detached duplexes or uh, single detached. Um, it just so happens a lot of those were built with single detached. When the new bylaw came in, um, it took uh, single detached out. So that's where we end up with these uh, existing properties that are now non-conforming. So you now have, and again, it's, it's a little bit ironic. Um, but we have half million dollar homes that if they were burnt down, they would have to be replaced by a duplex currently. Um, and that's, there, there's, there's literally hundreds of examples of that throughout the city. Um, areas that were, again, areas that were districted. And that's what I believe happened with this uh, fellow whose house burned down in the R four district was four years ago, we could have given him a permit within a few weeks. Um, and uh, now we can't give him one at all. Um, because the, the uh, the use, the single detached use was removed from that district. And now he's essentially forced to build an apartment building on it or sell it to somebody to build an apartment building on it, which causes other issues because it's a single lot and an apartment building won't actually physically fit on the site. So um, he's essentially been left with nothing. Um, and uh, as I say, there's, there's examples of that throughout the city, um, within virtually every district.
Appreciate that. Thank you. That, that gives me some clarity as well because it, you know, it's, as we've talked about changing from one to another and adding things, there's always, there's a minus, but there's always a plus. And I think this one's got a much bigger plus, I hope, than the minus, uh, as it's been noted. I'd still like to understand duplex, just if you can, one of you duplexes up and down in our books and semi-detached is side by side.
Correct.
I'll be darned, but okay, so I learn something new every day. Executive manager staying.
Yeah, I, I just also wanted that and I don't know if this gives you a little more comfortability, uh, counselor Buckingham. When, when there is a discretionary use being proposed, there is a notice that goes out to the area residents directly adjacent, I think, within a thirty meter radius of, of that property. And those residents have fourteen days to provide any comments back to the city with regards to what's being proposed and their concerns and everything. So that, that's also in addition to what we currently do with regards to the discretionary that we talked about here earlier today as well. So I just wanted to make sure I added that.
Counselor Buckingham.
I think the biggest part of that is what happens with those comments, right? How much are they taken into consideration? How is the communication process back and forth between the person that says, yes, I love this idea or no, I don't, doesn't matter, right? How is that process and how is our customer service to those people? That, that would be the biggest concern for me in that regard. I can say all day long, I'm going to send a letter in that I approve or that I love this or I hate this, right? But what, where does it go from there, right? And I, I think that needs to be a real big focus, no matter which of these things we're looking at ever. Not to say it's not great now, but I've just never really discussed it in detail to say that I hope that our customer service to those people, because you're not going to make everybody happy and you're, and you're gonna, you know, no matter what you do. But how is our process? And we're doing everything we can to, to have a nice, clear, concise, reliable and mutually respected process. And I don't know where we are in that regard today.
Yeah, I think as the executive over that department, my expectation is that when those are coming in, that our staff are taking those into consideration and if there's merit to them, um, and that there is significant impacts to the neighborhood, that those are taken into consideration through the process. It's pretty hard to justify, you know, a neighbor just doesn't want a duplex, yet it fits into the neighborhood, it fits into the architectural controls to stop that development from going further. The expectation again is staff take those into consideration if there's merit or any substantial uh, thing being brought forward that needs to be taken into consideration. Our staff should be taking those into consideration and do, uh, they currently do that. So, so that would be the expectation. Um, maybe Anthony, if there's any other items you can add to that, but you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's how they're handled currently and taking.
Yeah, and I, I don't question that. I just want to make sure that we continue that because I think there are those in the community that do question that. So just to make sure that we're doing everything we can on our customer service side is, is really important to me. Whether it's planning or water bills or whatever, it doesn't matter. It's, it's just to make sure that we're doing that process every time.
Duly noted and taken into consideration.
Counselor Fenton.
Yeah, I'm, I'm uh, very confident in, in the process, uh, after much deliberation. Uh, I think though, you know, I have talked to some individuals that uh, that are contractors, builders that still have land. And I think that's probably where some of the biggest problems are. They've, you know, we've reduced the, uh, the lot price uh, a, a year ago. Uh, and these guys got caught with having numerous lots and not being able to sell them and their values dropping. And so I think there could be a little bit of a trust thing within that. So uh, I think that's probably where the, the largest amount of concern is coming from is those that uh, that currently own land and have seen that they haven't been able to develop it. I know a developer that was uh, uh, building a house and ran into a snag on the, with the planning side of things. And uh, there was a stop order issued. So yeah, there's lots of, lots of little issues there. And I think that, that there's, there's not the great majority and I have, have to have confidence that the planning department will uh, have, use the, the proper discretion and uh, keep doing what, uh, what they have been doing in the previous years.
Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for recommendation from council on eight point three by law number zero three twenty twenty one, counselor Torres.
I move that council grant second reading to bylaw number three dash twenty twenty one, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting residential uses.
Secondary. Counselor Dycheck. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor. Opposed? Carried. I will look to you, counselor.
Yeah, I move that council grant third and final reading to bylaw number three dash twenty twenty one, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, respecting residential uses.
Secondary, counselor Dycheck, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you.
Moving on to other item number nine, mayor and council reports. Uh, I've attached my report for your information and for the publics. The uh, I didn't have to describe the weather. I think everybody knew what that's been like for the last little while, but certainly a lot of items. Uh, we had a bi-provincial health meeting that I was able to attend. And uh, one hadn't been held for some time. Members of the Lloyd and District Health Advisory Council, as well as the Yellowhead Advisory Committee from the Alberta side were present, as well as members of the government of Saskatchewan from Alberta Saskatchewan Health, Alberta Health, Saskatchewan Health Services and Alberta Health Services. Waiting on just some final notes to come out that uh, things are, I would like to say that there was some good discussion. Issues were noted and there is work being worked on and some improvements. I don't have any major announcements to say we're going to get this or that, but it's, it's most interesting. As we know, as a council, we deal with bi-provincial on a regular basis. And healthcare has got to be the ugliest file on my desk. I'll be honest with that. Because it just, it's never-ending and it's uh, something we have no control over, yet it affects every one of our residents and surrounding residents. We'll continue to keep council informed as that moves forward. Um, trying to get two ministers of health in the same place, but COVID hasn't helped that. Election got in the way. The list is long and endless, so I, I won't get on, I won't get on that horse. But I will just touch on the municipalities, the Saskatchewan convention. I'd like to thank council for attending virtually. This was a new methodology of attending a convention. Uh, we have the opportunity to uh, hear some speakers. That information I can share with you is going to be online so that if you didn't catch a particular workshop, you'll be able to uh, to view that online and get that information as well. Uh, certainly appreciate council being a present to ask questions at the minister's bear pit and from that perspective. So I think it was a, it was a good convention. We have a new president of our organization and there was a few other changes on the executive from the uh, vice president of mayors, uh, the mayor of towns uh, is a new replacement as well. So there were some changes that way. I want to congratulate Roger Hayward, our new president of Munisask. Uh, from that perspective, I think it was informative. The government uh, had a lot of tough questions and we didn't get a lot of answers, as sometimes it doesn't happen at convention. But certainly uh, the minister of government relations and a conversation since has indicated, you guys really put me on the spot, which I think he needed to be because that's his role. That's uh, welcome to a, a fairly busy file, but uh, we did have the opportunity to represent the city very well. So thank you very much for your attendance. I'll leave it to any other counselors that have any other comments. I'll leave it to any other councillors that have any other comments for their reports. I'll start with councillor Whiting.
Sure. Yep. Uh, it was, yeah, it was very interesting. I'm glad we were able to, uh, utilize a conference room in here and, uh. A few of us gathered to have internal discussions and that sort of stuff as, uh, topics came up. Um, enjoyed, uh, watching it, you know, uh, Netmaker and his, uh. His, uh, keynote address, you know, one of the key takeaways is, uh. And I'm sure somebody else will probably mention this too, but is quote, successful people forgive on the fly. And that's always, uh, that stuck with me. That was something that. I think is very important to think about. Um. Councillor Buckingham and myself took in the policing breakout session and there's a question that, um. We didn't get into any of the topics about, uh, Saskatchewan and, uh, and the funding, but. Um, one of the things that I, I heard there was that there is going, there might be some, uh, challenges with vacancies as. They had to close down, uh, the depot as, uh, as they were training and let's, let's hope that that doesn't come to. The wish and that there is enough staffing to fill all the vacancies that, uh, are open. And, uh, and another just, uh, thanks to your worship for your commentary, your video submissions, uh, on all the different topics from. Our agricultural societies and, uh, and revenue sharing, that's, um, that sort of stuff.
Thank you. Councillor Dychuk.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, yeah, it was, it was pretty interesting. Both Kendall Netmaker and then I think Doug Griffiths. Um, and both had a lot of important messaging, uh, who brought out. I mean, uh. One of the things I heard from Premier Wall many years ago was that by twenty twenty, fifty percent of the population of students in. Uh, Saskatchewan schools would be the First Nations Maitie or Inuit. And we're now into twenty twenty one. And so a lot of the messaging and, and as we're listening to Kendall. Uh, I, I just was thinking about, you know, the impact and example that, that he is. Uh, and the supports that he got and that lead him to be a success, a role model and, and really just kind of inspirational story it has to. You know, his, his drive, his desires and yet his grounding in terms of family and upbringing. That was very cool. Uh, Doug Griffiths, I think he said over seven hundred municipalities in Saskatchewan. Uh, you guys got to figure this out kind of thing. Those are my words, not his. Uh, but, but a lot of, again, you know, the downtown streets, what are we doing? And a lot of the pieces you talked about really are. Are super relevant for us. I attended the environmental, um, session. And it was, uh, very complex and, and what was fascinating about it is that there's so many different areas that are actually woven into environment. And as they went through the list of, you know, uh, prayer resilience and ecosystems and water systems and on and on and on, it was a holy macro. Saskatchewan has the second highest water per capita in, in Canada. And so as you're, you know, again, thinking about some of the projects we have, particularly with. Our wa- uh, not our wastewater, our surface water drainage and, and whatever and the impacts and. And the pieces that we encounter, it's kind of like you go, wow, like. And then the other part really that was pretty, I think, again, as I heard loud and clear is this whole landfill piece where people are really struggling on this one. We need help to close it off. We not just need help to open a new one up, but what are you going to do to, you know, close the old one off and where are the standards? Uh, and some people are talking about a net zero community, so there's some grants in there. Uh, David Brock, Doug Heck, Wes Cottick. Um, so there's, there's, uh, there's a whole bunch of stuff out there that's kind of exciting, particularly around waste. Uh, management where it's, it's recycled and used for energy and other pieces. And there's a lot of micro kind of operations out there that not only from this conference, but other places where you look at it, you know, uh, there's opportunity. Uh, and, and again, back to our location where we are on, on highway sixteen on the border. Uh, again, just from an economic developed perspective, uh, there, there may be opportunity for us. We don't need to have the mega, you know, facilities out there, but we could certainly operate the micro facilities.
Thanks councillor. There's a lot of discussion around that and there will be more, I'm sure. Councillor Buckingham, you want to take a minute? You got that covered? Councillor Torson.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I'll just add in a couple of things, um, most of which you've heard around the table and I, I agree with, you know. Said about the keynotes and things, um. One of the things I just wanted to mention was just the prompt payment legislation and how it affects municipalities. I sat in on one of those, uh. On one of those and then it turned out that our city clerk had provided more or less a briefing on how it affects the city of Lloyd, so I feel like I. May have wasted my time with that one a little bit, but I did, uh, I did. Um, get a chance to ask some good questions as far as, you know, even being careful with fraud and stuff like that, because with the expediated. Process, there could be some more risk that comes with that, especially because municipalities are often, um. Are often the targets of fraud for those kinds of things with big money that they spend. Um, but then we also got the op- I got the opportunity to speak with or ask questions because our event was relatively. Poorly attended with procurement and highways, um, and it was mostly just a handful of people asking about when is the highway in their town going to get fixed up? Um, but still there was, there was some good back and forth questions and answers that we had as far as. How the, uh, COVID spending, um. Is going to affect Lloydminster businesses who are kind of, uh, both in Alberta and Saskatchewan and I didn't love the answers that I got, so it may be worth. Uh, our mayor who goes to the construction association meetings and, and at least having some conversations with them as far as. Uh, COVID spending and how it's, uh, how the requirements of declarations of local benefit in either Alberta or Saskatchewan, how do we fit into the mix and whether. Uh, they ought to be lobbying for themselves to a certain extent. I, I feel like I did a little bit at that meeting, but. Um, it was kind of, it's tricky for the businesses in Lloydminster with, uh, the way that. There's kind of strings attached to some of the COVID spending, not necessarily in Lloydminster, but outside of our municipality. So. Um, one other thing I just wanted to mention quickly was. Not important, I'll bring it up next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I certainly appreciated, um, for my very first, uh, convention to. Even though we couldn't be in person, that we were here and able to network with other council members and I appreciate that we could, you know. Pause and, and I could ask questions and we could discuss and, and talk about how that related to Lloydminster. So it was a great experience for me. Um, Doug Griffiths is always a favorite of mine and he's a community growth strategist. Um, and as others have talked about his keynote, he really challenges us to create community and. To stop doing things that kill our community. And so if you haven't read his book, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community, it's a really great read. And I would encourage even any, any residents that are, are listening today, just to pick that book up and read it because. It gives us some really good ideas on things that we can do if we want to create a, a strong and, and vibrant community. Um, I wanted to highlight a couple of the issues that were the focus of discussions with the ministers of health. So. Uh, we had Minister of Health as well as Minister of Mental Health and Addiction and Seniors and councillor Fagman joined me on that one. So a couple of interesting things, Saskatchewan's working with the federal government to develop a pan-Canadian virtual care system for seniors. And essentially it would grow the telehealth system so that seniors can access care closer to home. So access to, you know, they have their, their, uh, uh, imaging done and it goes to a specialist and they can. Rather than travel to Regina or Saskatoon or Yorkton, um, et cetera, to, to see the specialist, they can actually have a virtual. Um, telehealth with them and, and that would include in, in proving those systems in Lloydminster and area as well. There was a lot of discussion around ambulance service with not, um, some very good responses. Or clear answers on how they're going to address that. I think that's, you know, an issue for our community, but it continues to be an issue for the province. Long-term care was. Was a, a hot topic and recruitment of doctors and nurse practitioners for rural and remote sites. Um, they also mentioned that they provide funding to every school to have a mental health support in each school. And so that was kind of a question mark for me because I wanted to check that out to see. What that funding looks like and how it's being used in, uh, community schools. So I'll, I'll just ask councillor Fagman if he had anything to add to.
That would be the plan, councillor Torson.
Sorry, there was one more thing I was going to add, uh, and just that the city of Lloydminster I felt was very well represented, uh, and our mayor did a. Great job in representing us and all cities in Saskatchewan as, uh. Chair of the Mayor's Caucus and I thought he, he just did a great job and, uh, definitely lots of city of Lloydminster. Uh, logos popping up here and there, uh, because of getting his attention and shout out to Leo Perry for the grease beast. Getting attention around too.
Yep, Leo got back on the spotlight one more time with the grease beast. He's far from being done, so.
And, and the mayor actually had three out of the four video questions, um, in the bear pit session, so. So we've got lots of, uh, playtime there and, and great questions. So thanks for doing that.
Well, the communications team can work with a lot, with a lot and do even better. So I thank you, appreciate the communications team for. Helping me with those questions and getting them, uh, set up to be able to send those in. So thank you to Leo and his team.
I'm just going to add one more thing, Your Worship, and I attended Danny Hooper's fundraising, uh, session as well and I was thinking. You know, what do we do for our new civic and, and what does that look like? And certainly it was, uh, I took down two or three ideas and. He's got a book that's available for free download and zip into his website, but he had a. He just spoke to his experiences and, and, and quite frankly, you know what? Had he not, had they not had him as the host. Uh, might've been a little different, you know, whole conference, that's for sure, but. Uh, he had, he had these incredible ideas around fundraising, so I took lots of notes and. Uh, look forward to downloading it as, uh, virtual book.
Thank you. Well, I think that Danny's, uh, presence was, uh, come at a cost to the convention committee and to the convention, but. Uh, he filled in very well. I had the opportunity to be online with Toronto because that's where they had enough servers and enough internet. And that brings up a whole discussion because I could tell you some of the folks that were also presenting. Had to, uh, had like point one or one megabyte, one megabit up and one down and it, you know, the guy in Toronto had a hundred and he says, how close are you to a city? And the guy says, two and a half hours or five hours choice, uh, being Regina or Saskatoon. So it was kind of interesting, that's for sure. The, um. The need for broadband was very clearly, uh, made during this convention because it took a lot of, uh, energy to have it happen. So. And again, thanks to council for making that, uh, make it work for their schedules. This was a, a little bit unique. We saved some money, but it just didn't have the, quite the convention experience of. Of gathering and making the trip to beautiful Cold Saskatoon, but I do appreciate councillor Fagman's comments. It was a little closer to home and a lot easier to get out in, out in the minus forty weather, so. Any other comments from council? Not seeing any. I'll ask, is there any other matters that this council needs to deal with? I have one as ten point one, but, uh, no others. I'll kick into it. Uh, in light of the last couple of days, especially, I guess this really comes to light, but some of the actions in the United States of America and, uh. And the, the main issue is the halting of the Keystone XL pipeline. Uh, I'd like to give the credit to the Cold Lake Council and, uh, their administration for preparing the, a lot of the talking points I have and. Information. Basically, the background is in Lloydminster area, region, oil and gas production has long been the principal driver of our growth, prosperity and quality of life for those who live and work here. Canadian petroleum industry has endured severe, serious challenges since twenty fourteen. While that industry has suffered, so has many of the Lloydminster regional, region. On January twentieth, twenty twenty one, the Canadian oil industry was dealt another blow when the United States. Administration revoked the permit for the Keystone XL border crossing pipeline. Nineteen hundred and forty-seven kilometer Keystone XL pipeline route, beginning at Hardesty, Alberta and ending in Steel City, Nebraska. Represents a safe and environmentally responsible way to deliver crude oil from Western Canada to refineries in the US Gulf Coast. Where they're looking for and need it. This oil often replaces oil produced in a third world country in some cases with a poor environmental and humanitarian record. In recent years, the Canadian petroleum producers have been denied opportunity to compete in a level playing field. As Canadian oil remains virtually landlocked by bureaucratic red tape and protecting, protectionist foreign policy. As a direct result, once thriving local businesses in our community have been forced to cut back or close altogether. Impacting the livelihoods of thousands of local families in both Saskatchewan and Alberta. Canadian oil producers are among the safest, most environmentally responsible employers on the planet. Employing thousands of people and supporting a variety and the viability of our villages, towns and cities, including our own. Urgent tangible action is required to restore a fair and economic climate for Canadian producers. In turn, giving Canadian workers fair opportunity to earn and provide for their families. There's a list of recommendations. I won't read them to save council some time, but really this is a. Opportunity from an alignment from the strategic plan for our community, not just the viability, but. The open and respect, responsive government of hearing what local people say on the street. I can add this, that, uh, I have neighbors down the street that are unemployed, worked in the oil and gas industry for many years and, uh, it's just gone. And I think we all know examples of people, uh, recently the Husky-Sinovus merger. Or acquisition of Husky by Sinovus resulted in some additional cuts and that's been happening across. I. Can tell you that Calgary is looking at almost a thirty percent vacancy rate downtown. And again, things are changing, but I think at the same time, we've also experienced minus, minus forty-five for almost two weeks. And the interesting part that I read yesterday was the oil wells are freezing up in Texas. Because there's not enough salt in their saltwater and they're not got enough production and, uh. We're going to see prices of fuel go up simply because we had a cold snap and. I realize there's people that have an opinion about green energy. There is a spot for green energy, but. That green energy was covered in snow and had frozen turbines. So. It's been a tough challenge for folks in the United States of America from Mississippi, Missouri, to North Carolina, to Texas. It's hard to imagine. That covers a good portion of the United States if you cover it with snow and they've, uh, they've felt the effects. So. Uh, I would ask councils, uh, to pass the recommendation, uh, there's a list of them here to basically send off letters of support. To our, uh, provincial and federal governments to, uh, support the need for additional pipelines to ensure that. Energy that's produced in Canada is, can be consumed in Canada and the United States because I. Haven't even discussed line five in Michigan because there's a challenge that exists there today. And, uh, I don't think anybody would want their heat turned off in the last day or two, if not in the last two weeks in this country, that's for sure. I'll leave it to any comments and then I'll look to council for, uh, their, their recommendation. If anyone has any, uh, additional comments, I would welcome them now. If not, I would look for a recommendation from council.
Well, I, I'll just make one point because I think it's important. I don't disagree with any, anything that's in front of us here. Uh, it just seems a little lame as Canadians when we're busy trying to get oil down to the US and we can't even get it across our own country.
You're absolutely right, councillor.
Uh, you know, there's, there's some pieces in this that, um, we're, we're really laying the blame of this at the feet of the US government, the new president. Reality is, is, you know, that's like a hail Mary pass now when we should have been building and doing other things. Uh, for our country in a much more meaningful, planned way. Uh, there are a lot of arguments for and against, who's to blame and not to blame and. Um, and there are many improvements that have come before this one and haven't laid one inch of pipe. Um, but here we are. So, um, I, I somehow in all of this, I mean. There, there needs to be some reckoning around how we, we encourage Canadians to build a pipeline that's going to serve all of us. Uh, in a way that we don't have to rely. You know, if, if there's an example of, uh, a reason for doing that, it's just simply even looking at our own capacity to manufacture. Vaccinations or vaccines. Uh, we're always relying upon someone else and our big brother further south. Uh, we, we can't do that and then complain when they don't support us. We need to be able to take care of ourselves.
Very well said, very well said. I think that, uh, the pipeline to New Brunswick would be an added benefit. For, uh, Canada East and our energy east as it was known as and certainly that is, uh, mentioned here in this, in the recommendations as well, so. Not seeing any. I'll look to direction from council, councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. I move the council resolve to declare solidarity with the city of Cold Lake Council on all Canadian municipalities with concerns over United States government's decision to halt work on the Keystone XL pipeline. Yeah, we, we have to do them separately?
Nope, I think we can do, we can do it as one.
Okay. I also move the council resolve to urge federal and provincial leaders to pursue meaningful action. To counter, uh, protectionist foreign policy with detrimental impact to the Canadian oil and gas sector. Further, I move the council resolve, support the city of Cold Lake Council's call for the following actions from the Canadian federal government. A letter of support to US politicians who support legislation to reverse the course of President Joe Biden's unilateral Keystone XL decision. A letter of recommendation to the Prime Minister of Canada and the premiers of Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba and Ontario. It moved. Yeah, the whole screen moved on me here. A letter of support to TC Energy supporting keeping the pipeline constructed so far. So that the infrastructure can be kept in place until it's nee- it's needed, need becomes evident to the United States of America as Canada's oil supply is continually being replaced by supply from other countries. Um, I'll just read the other one again. A letter of recommendation to the Prime Minister of Canada and the premiers of Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba and Ontario to move forward on a.